Welcome to the Bothell City Council July 2, 2019 meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all council members are here except Councilmember McNeil, who's absent in excuse, and Councilmember McAuliffe, she'll be here in about five minutes. Meeting agenda approval, is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? So I have one, we need to move, or sorry, not we need to, I would like the council to agree to move up AB 19-113, adoption of the King County 2018 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan 2, because they need to leave, they're going to multiple council meetings tonight, so trying to get them out of here. I was thinking to have them do that after the proclamation. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay. Actually, just real quick, is there anybody in the audience that wants to give a public comment on the King County Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan? Just raise your hand if you're here for that. Okay, so that's good. All right, so we'll move it up to right after the proclamation. Review public engagement opportunities. We have the 4th of July Freedom Festival festivities begin at 8:30 a.m. with a pancake breakfast at Fire Station 42, followed by the Children's Parade at 11:15 and the Grand Parade at noon. The Music in the Park Concert Series kicks off July 5 and runs Fridays through August at North Creek Sports Field Number 3 from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Just the Kidn' Around Concert Series runs Wednesdays beginning July 10 from 11:00 a.m. to noon at the Park of Bothell Landing Amphitheater. And the last one is Take Our Community Survey for the Prose Plan. It's available now through August at our website. Is that on the banner thing on the main website? Yeah, okay. All right, that's that. Now we have the proclamation. So they've scripted me, they were scared what I was gonna say, so I gotta follow this, all these rules. Okay. So, see, so Mayor makes comments about the delegation. Okay, here we go. "The City of Bothell is fortunate to have strong relationships with our legislative delegation, and we are grateful you took the time to meet with us here at City Hall prior to session, listened to us when we traveled down to Olympia, and then come back this evening so we can recognize your hard work. For those who may not know, legislative session requires legislators to be in Olympia Monday through Friday, sometimes Saturdays from January through April. They work really long days, sometimes into the early hours of the morning." I can attest to that, I was there, they were there till 3:00 in the morning, meeting the night before, yeah, that's crazy. "Many legislators spend the entire week in Olympia coming home for a brief visit on their weekends to see their families. They're truly dedicated public servants. We ask our legislative delegation to attend this evening so we could publicly recognize them for the work they did on behalf of the City of Bothell during the 2019 session. Each one of the," this is very scripted, you guys enjoying this? "Each one of them carried the banner for a particular city priority, and by working together, we're able to accomplish every item on the city's legislative agenda. Former Senator Guy Palumbo spearheaded the effort to increase funding in the city's downtown revitalization plan, and as a result, the city will be receiving $1.5 million for environmental remediation. This will help us complete the cleanup of the northeast corner of 522 and Bothell Way and get that property ready for development. Senator, he was representative at the time, Derek Stanford, ensured that $400,000 for the Canyon Park Sub area plan was included in the House-proposed operating budget, which led the funding being included in the final budget. Representative Shelley Kloba led the effort to increase funding for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, resulting in an additional nine classes per calendar year, which will provide more timely training for our law enforcement officers. All three members supported the investments in the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, which will provide a grant of $1.08 million to replace the Bridge of Bothell Landing. And last, but definitely not least, our delegation directed up to $600 million towards the improvements of I-405, which will widen 405, build a new interchange at 522, and more. It is difficult to describe how difficult a task this was, but suffice to say, this was a politically, legislatively, and logistically challenging feat, and we are thrilled with the outcome. We can't thank you enough for," how long is this thing? "We can't thank you enough for representing the City of Bothell so well during the 2019 session. We are lucky to have such a dedicated public servants." Whew, I'm gonna take a break, I'll be back in about, just kidding. So I'm gonna come down to the proclamation. Well, I gotta make sure I do all the steps here. More reading. Okay. "This is a proclamation honoring the First Legislative District delegation, whereas the City of Bothell appreciates the members of the Washington State Legislative District in their service to the citizens of Bothell. And whereas Senator Guy Palumbo and Representatives Shelley Kloba and Derek Stanford worked," they didn't know what to put, so they just said Derek Stanford, "worked diligently to advance the City of Bothell's 2019-2020 legislative agenda, and whereas legislators of the legislators of the First District supported legislation that funded urgently needed improvements on the north end of Interstate 405 to reduce congestion and support the effectiveness of bus rapid transit. And whereas legislators in the First District supported a 2019 through 21 state operating budget which appropriates $400,000 to the City of Bothell," I can't believe I have to read this all over again, "City of Bothell for the Canyon Park Sub area plan funds 19 Basic Law Enforcement Academy training classes at the Criminal Justice Training Commission. Whereas this legislature in the First District supported the 2019-21 state capital budget which invests $1.5 million towards the Bothell Downtown Revitalization Plan and $1.08 million towards the replacement of the bridge at Bothell Landing. Now therefore, the Bothell City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Bothell, hereby extend our thanks to Senator Guy Palumbo, Senator Derek Stanford, and Representative Shelley Kloba for their outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the citizens of Bothell, and urge all citizens to join in extending our appreciation to their public So according to instructions, each one of you are supposed to say something too now, so I gotta shut up. Who do you guys, go ahead.
I'll go first.
Go down the line, that's easier.
Thanks for putting the bar so high, guys. Appreciate that. I am in awe of what you guys accomplished this session, I really am, and Bothell is so lucky to have had you there supporting us. We got all of our legislative priorities done in the first year of theennium, so I'm just gonna roll in and sit at my desk and twiddle my thumbs. So thank you so much for everything, I look forward to working with two of you. Thanks, bye.
Good for them. I just want to thank you. I've been on this dais for 10 years, and this is the most we've ever received from the state, and it was through your hard work that this was all brought about. So I can't thank you enough, and I don't think the citizens in this area can thank you enough for your hard work and dedication to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being so gracious and welcoming when we came down to Olympia and making time for us and listening to the same pitch that we made to you multiple times, and I mean, you knew it as well as us, so it was, you know, just amazing to see the accomplishments that you were able to make, and we were glad to support you and thankful in just the results. Thank you.
Well, we sit here on the dais and we're supposed to be nonpartisan. You guys are down there in Olympia, and you are partisan, but what you brought for Bothell was very nonpartisan, and so over the years, you guys have earned bragging rights to your kids of, "I had a part in that," and it's quite a legacy that you've given us, and we're deeply, deeply grateful, so thank you.
Well, I guess I'm still last but not least, but I know how hard it is, after 24 years in the Washington State Senate, and serving with Representative Derek Stanford, how hard it is to actually bring home the number of dollars that you did to support our citizens in Bothell, and it shows your dedication and your time and energy that you truly care. So thank you so much.
I have to double dip. We have to say goodbye to Palumbo, Senator Palumbo. You will be greatly missed, greatly missed. You were an amazing legislator.
I'll miss you too. All right, so this time, you guys wanna come up and give a few words? Okay, you only get this if you come up and give a few words. One for each of you. Yeah. There you go. Want to miss your jokes? You're not gonna say anything? Yeah, that's how you give it back.
I feel like I said it yesterday, I feel like we're just here for Derek's appointment and Davina's appointment, but I just really hope, I just, I'm gonna cry again. Thank you to the people of Bothell and the First District for putting your faith in me for three years, three sessions. You know, I ran to do one thing, and that was infrastructure, I think we did a good job at that in three years. Would have liked to finish Route 9 and Route 522 as well, not totally Bothell-related. Hopefully, the three of you will be able to take that up, you know, with the next gas tax package, or the cap and trade package if that passes as well. But I'm really gonna miss this job, and I'm glad that we did some good things for Bothell, but there's more to do, and I have all the confidence in the world that the three of you are gonna do a great job, so thank you again.
Well, thank you, and I just want to emphasize how much it's a team effort, and, you know, we've had a great team for the First District down in Olympia, and we can see the results of that. There's a great team here in Bothell, and you've been very much a part of this effort, staff, elected members, and the lobbyists as well, who help convey information to us during session. It takes everything, working together, to get accomplishments like this done, and I'm very proud of the work that's been done, not just by me, but by this whole team. So thank you very much for being so engaged and involved in this, and making it easier for us to do that work. Thank you.
So I would also like to echo the teamwork theme. Getting the funding for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy is something that, three years in a row, we've done, we've been successful at doing, but it's because I can stand up there and say that I have all of our law enforcement officers behind us, and the chiefs, Chief Cummings, as well as other chiefs in this area and across the state, as well as our sheriffs, understand that if it takes, you know, four months between when they hire a candidate for the police, for the law enforcement, and then they get them into the training, which takes five months during which they're paying a salary, that's a long time, that's a big expense on our local municipalities and counties that they're spending before they even get a police officer on the street. So insofar as we can shrink down that time by having appropriate amount of spaces in the academy to get our recruits through and trained, I know that that's really important, and so I'm really appreciative of all of the law enforcement support that we've had, telling the stories, providing the facts and figures. I can't do any of that without them, and so I really appreciate the teamwork and happy to do it, and it is an ongoing thing, so I'll be doing it again next year. So thank you all for your help, too.
All right, one part, one last part of the script. So council, will you come down in front of the dais here, and then will you guys take a picture with us? All right.
I know my place.
Okay.
Just a minute, and I will get him on the line. That's what I didn't want to happen.
Now it's gonna be that internet sound dial-up.
All right, give me one minute, I don't know what's happening, it was working earlier.
This is why we don't normally call into council meetings, council members.
This is Laura at the City of Bothell.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, we are now at AB 19-113, the adoption of the King County 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
Councilmember McNeil, you're on the intercom system, just so you know.
Thank you.
Pat, welcome.
Thank you.
Trying to get you out of here as quick as I could.
No, I appreciate that, good evening. Do I need to turn my mic on, or can you hear me okay? Great, thank you. For the record, my name is Pat McLaughlin, I serve as King County's Director of Solid Waste. It's my honor to be here before you this evening and talk about a body of work that has been underway for several years, and that is the update of our Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan. And right off the bat, I want to acknowledge the partnership that we enjoy with the fine city of Bothell, and the representation that you have had through this process, both through your mayor and your staff, Sabrina Combs and many others, in your representation in the Regional Policy Committee, that have helped us to get this policy document right. And it's been very important, because it hasn't been updated since 2001, and I think you can imagine that our regional needs, our interests, have evolved significantly since 2001, and in fact, this evening, we're gonna talk about some important policy decisions that need to be made in terms of how we serve our region's interest in protecting the environment, enhancing regional resources, and dealing with waste. And we need to benefit from modern policy guidance, and that's really what this document provides, this Regional Comprehensive Plan provides direction for the next six to 20 years. I'd like to, by way of framework, remind you that this regional solid waste system is serving a very large area, one of the largest regional solid waste systems in the country, to be honest with you, over 2,100 square miles, a million and a half-plus residents, and we generate a lot of garbage, nearly a million tons of garbage, and it's serving not only the 37 cities in our county, and I said 37, that's because two cities are not part of the regional solid waste system. The City of Seattle has their own individual solid waste system, the City of Milton is served by the Pierce County system, but the remaining 37 cities and the unincorporated areas of the county comprise this regional solid waste system. And one of the best features of this system is the fact that it's a balanced system that includes both public and private enterprise, and that has allowed us to achieve some amazing accomplishments over the year in terms of how we manage resources and waste. So the cities themselves, of course, are contracting with private enterprise to manage the collection process, and we both, the county and cities, rely on private enterprise to help us with the recycling of the resources that are collected in our region. But our role in the county in this partnership, and this is really defined in the interlocal agreements we have, such as with the City of Bothell, is to manage the transfer of the waste and the ultimate disposal of the waste. We also do a lot of work in the areas of waste prevention and recycling outreach and education. And through that, we have achieved collectively some impressive results. I mentioned that we generated nearly a million tons of garbage, but the good news is, we diverted even more in terms of recyclables. And your city, and I'll just have to give a shout-out again to Sabrina, is a good reason why we're able to achieve that, because there's a genuine passion for moving these materials back into the economy, and with the energy and the innovation that the City of Bothell and staff members such as Sabrina really bring to the table around those regional discussions has allowed us to achieve a regional recycling rate that is nearly twice that, the national average, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. In fact, there's three areas that I want to zero in on. The Comprehensive Plan covers a vast array of issues, including financial policies and the sort, but tonight, I'd like to focus in three particular areas. That is disposal, transfer, and recycling. And the reason that I would like to kind of draw your attention in these areas, because these are where we have some of the most critical and time-sensitive policy decisions to make, and it's why the timing of the adopting of this plan is so critical, because we don't have any time to make these decisions, and we need to benefit from the policy guidance that is reflected in this plan update. So let's start with recycling. We do it really well in this region. We have a 54% regional recycling rate. The national average is in low 30s, right? So we have already achieved some incredible and impressive milestones in terms of moving materials back into the economy, preserving our natural resources, harvesting energy, and doing great things, and yet, we can do so much more. So it's to not be a wet blanket, or at the risk of being such, you know, today, we probably had nearly 140 truckloads of materials going from our transfer stations to our landfill. 140 truckloads, that's a lot. Well, if I told you that about 115, maybe 120 of those truckloads were filled with recyclables. So even though we've done a tremendous job, there's so much more we can do, and what this plan lays out is a menu of options that help to identify strategies and approaches that can take our recycling from 54% beyond 70%. But the key isn't for us to continue to adopt these strategies independently. That's been our approach thus far, and it's got us as far as I think we're going to get. If we really want to get to 70% and beyond, we have to begin thinking about a harmonized approach. You see, there are three material recovery facilities that serve our region. A material recovery facility takes those blue bins at the curbside, and they sort those recyclables and get them into the marketplace. So there's three locations that do that, and yet, there are 38 different ways of recycling in King County, right? How the City of Bothell recycles looks different than how the City of Renton recycles, or even how the unincorporated areas recycle. Everybody's doing it a little bit differently, and that gets confusing, and that confusion causes contamination, and that contamination then degrades the value or the opportunity to recycle, right? So we need to, if we want to really get to the next level, we've got to really think about, you know, depending on where we live and work and play, we need to be able to recycle in King County the same way, and not really have these artificial barriers defined by city or even county boundaries, but rather have a very common, simple approach to recycling. In this plan, we have a menu of options ranging from changing the frequency of how recyclables are collected. Most commonly, they're collected every two weeks, but the reality is, there's less waste that really justifies having a weekly waste collection. So one of the strategies is you flip the collection cycle, and you collect recyclables every week and waste every other week, because really, the food and the yard waste, the stuff that stinks, that goes away every week, right? The plastics, the cardboard, the metal, all that good stuff, that goes in the recycle bin, and there's a lot of it, and that probably deserves a more frequent service. So just strategies like flipping the traditional approaches can make a big difference. So can, as we talk about multifamily, one of the big challenges across the region is how do we serve multifamily, because we struggle, you know, it's not uncommon that a single-family recycle rate could be twice that of a multifamily recycle rate. Well, there are strategies articulated within this comprehensive plan that help identify ways to get at those multifamily units and really raise recycling rates. Simple ways, education and outreach, working with the property managers, working with the haulers to make sure the right types of containers and labeling and the sort is in place, and even doing outreach with the constituents that live in those multifamily units. Probably the most significant opportunity you have is through your own city code, so as any new developments are being permitted, you have an opportunity to influence how those are ultimately designed and built, because it can be challenging for some of those that are already in place. But there are strategies in place, we believe we can get at a tremendous amount of those recyclables. That's good for the environment, it's good for the economy, and it's good for our disposal options, which we'll talk about in a moment. Our disposal options are only gonna get more expensive, and so the least we have to put through that channel, the better, and we'll talk about those options here in just a moment. Before we do, let's talk about transfer. You know, we have transfer stations across King County, about eight in our urban areas, we've also got a couple of drop boxes, and those transfer stations serve as a local, primarily a local drop-off point for the haulers, so that as they're working and serving the neighborhoods and the businesses, excuse me, they can get back on the route, they can empty their trucks, get back into the neighborhoods, and move efficiently through that collection process. They also, of course, serve as an opportunity for self-hauler, small businesses and residents who are doing their own cleanup and have their own, perhaps bulky items to get rid of on the weekend. But there's a problem, and that is that some of these stations are 1960s-era stations, they barely can fit the modern-sized garbage truck. In fact, we've had to raise the roof on a couple of stations such as Houghton, just so that the trucks can get in there and dump. But the Houghton Station is sorely past its designed life. It's an open-air station, and those open-air stations are much more difficult to control noise and odor and dust. The picture you see depicted here, that's actually not an artist rendition, that's a real photograph of the new Faktoria Station, looks more like an office building perhaps, but this also replaced an open-air station. Not only can we control the environmental conditions so much better, the services we're able to provide are also significantly enhanced. We have a full suite of recycling at this station, we used to have no recycling options at all. We can get our customers in and out much quicker, just through that improved design. There's less impacts on the exterior roadways, both because we have the capacity for onsite queuing, but also, we can compact the waste at this facility, which means there's a third less truck traffic leaving the facility. So there's a lot of environmental and service benefits that come with a modern station, and the challenge today is that the Houghton Station, which is hosted by the City of Kirkland, doesn't offer any of these benefits, and yet, their constituents are paying the same price as those that get to use this station, and quite honestly, they're getting substantially less. And so it's time to address that inequitable service option, and this plan calls to site and build a new northeast, new northeast station to provide the right level of service for that growing part of the region, which your constituents too will benefit from. The final area I wanted to chat with you tonight is about disposal. I gave you a bit of a teaser, you know, there's a lot of recyclables going to the landfill. We think that there's a really solid roadmap to get at those recyclables and get them back into the environment and out of the landfill, but we still are ultimately gonna need a place to put that waste. Right now, we have the final cell, we call it Area 8. We'll begin putting waste in Area 8, perhaps this weekend, actually, we might do a ribbon-cutting here later this week. That cell's gonna last us until about 2025. That cell is going to last us until about 2025, and it will be filled up. We can then go back over a couple of the other areas, Areas 5 and Area 6, but by 2028, Cedar Hills will be at capacity. We'll have no place to put that garbage. For over 50 years, we've been able to manage our waste locally. That's been the lowest-cost option. It's also been the least environmental impact approach to serve our region. The question that this plan sought out to answer is, what's next? What happens after 2028? So we looked at a multitude of options. We looked at adding additional capacity at Cedar Hills. We looked at using a model of waste export, which is how the city of Seattle, Edmondson and Homic County, approached their waste. They sent it to an out-of-county landfill via rail. We also looked at waste-to-energy, a more technology approach to mass burn and incinerate the waste and generate some energy through the process. As you looked at all three of those options and assessed the risks, the costs, and the general feasibility and environmental impacts associated with them, the clear choice for this region at this time was to maximize the remaining capacity at Cedar Hills. It is our current system asset. It's probably the last time we'll be able to do that, because in order to access any additional capacity at that landfill, we actually have to move facilities. It's maybe a little bit difficult to see in the image that you have there, but if you see in the, towards the upper-right corner, you see some buildings. It's a maintenance facility where we service all of the heavy equipment and the fleet of tractor-trailers that we have. And there's a fuel station and a few administrative trailers. All of those would need to be moved in order for us to develop a cell there called Area 9, which could carry us till about 2040. But in doing so, it does a couple of things. One is, it continues to allow us to manage our waste locally. It allows us to do so at the lowest cost to the ratepayer and continue to have the least environmental impact. Equally important, however, it provides us a planning runway, because this is it, right? We don't have any capacity after this cell, and we are going to need another solution. That solution could be waste export, it could be waste-to-energy, it could be some other emerging technology. This gives us a planning runway to figure out what is the right disposal long-term for this region. And I think we need every opportunity to plan that through. And I think the worst thing that could happen is for us to run out of time and have an option that may be attractive to us be removed from the options list because we have no time. So I think this gives us the ability to really choose what is reflective of our regional priorities and values going forward. So in addition to identifying recycling strategies and transfer modernization and a disposal solution, this plan also calls for us to continue the planning process. So there's a bit of fatigue in our regional system, having developed this. We've worked extensively with our advisory committees and stakeholders to develop a really robust plan, and that's been a lot of effort to get us that far. And yet, the plan says we're not done. Yes, we need to implement a new cell at Cedar Hills and get busy on a new Northeast Station and drive our recycling rates higher, but we also have to continue our planning to select the best next-long-term disposal option. And so we're committed to do that very thing. In terms of this plan development, it has gone through, of course, our advisory committee process. It went through the Regional Policy Committee and the King County Council. And through the RPC and King County Council process, there were a few amendments that actually, I think, brought strength and clarity to that plan. And primarily, we're addressing a lot of the public comment concerns that were brought forward through this engaging process. So the amendments that are reflected in the plan before you reaffirm the county's commitment to maintaining a buffer between where the garbage is on the landfill and the bordering perimeter of the landfill. That's a 1,000-foot buffer between garbage and our property lines. And we've reaffirmed our commitment to continue that buffer. We also, through the amendments, have identified a need to strengthen and expand upon our bird management program. Some of you have had a chance to tour the facility. It often looks more like a wildlife preserve than it does a landfill. But we have to manage that wildlife, and there's a lot of eagles there. And so we're looking at ways to better manage this protected species. Not an easy thing to do, but nonetheless, an important element. Amendments also call for us to continue to engage experts in our design of cover systems, both for daily cover, interim cover, and permanent covers over the cells that we operate in there. And that helps to continue ensure the best practices are in place to mitigate offsite impacts associated with the landfilling activities. It reaffirms our commitment to minimize the heights of Areas 5, 6, and 7 in accordance with a settlement agreement that was put in place back in the 90s with our neighboring community. It also, again, calls for this work plan of post-Cedar Hills, right? Our work isn't done even once this plan is adopted. Another amendment called for us to explore, along with the King County Roads Division, options for mitigation associated with roadway impacts around the landfill. And then also improved transparency over some reporting that has been going to our regulators, but will now also go to our county council around elements of our environmental monitoring and reporting. So some things that really, I think, strengthened and bolstered the content of the plan are also represented in what is before you. In terms of the process, we're excited to be at the stage that we are. Again, it's been a very collaborative and extensive effort to develop what we think is a really robust plan for us going forward. We're in a city adoption process now, and that will continue through September, and at which point, then the State Department of Ecology will have final say in this adoption process. Let me just speak about your role as an esteemed partner of the regional system. Our interlocal agreements between King County and the city of Bothell call for a 120-day period that provides an opportunity for all of the 37 partners to take action. No city is obligated to take action, and action is generally in the form of a city ordinance relative to a position of support or opposition to the plan. So far, we've had four cities take a action, and I'm happy to say, all four cities have taken action in support of the plan. The city of Black Diamond, city of Maple Valley, city of Bellevue, and the city of Woodinville have all acted in support of the plan. We're very pleased of that, and I won't, I won't say anything but the truth. I hope that your fine city will elect to do the same thing. But what will determine whether or not this plan is adopted is the action of those cities that make a move, either in favor and opposition, as represented by 75% of the population from those cities. So right now, if no other cities took action, the plan would be adopted, because we're four-for-four. But we've got some time ahead, and I'm here this evening to not just ask for your support, but to certainly inform that decision first. If there's additional information that I can provide or questions that I can answer that can aid your contemplative efforts here, I'd be happy to do so. And again, appreciate the partnership that we have and the confidence that you've put in the county to run this part of the system for you.
All right. Thank you, Director McLaughlin. I forgot I should call you that instead of Pat at these meetings. Councilmember Agnew, you have questions?
So the Cedar Hill landfill is going to be at capacity 2028. Now, you're going to be able to make some Band-Aid moves to move it forward. And I know that incineration is very expensive, but I think it's going to be more expensive the more we wait. How much have you looked into that, the incineration for energy facility?
That's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. In 2017, we hired a firm called Normandau and Associates, and they had some subcontractors as well. And collectively, they represented really some of the brightest minds on waste-to-energy and some of the most current experiences in terms of designing, building, and operating waste-to-energy plants here in the U.S. And the task that we gave them in 2017 was to assume that we were going to move forward with a waste-to-energy plant in King County. What we wanted to know is what is the best-fit technology, because there's a range of technology for waste-to-energy, but what's the best-fit technology for waste-to-energy here in King County, given our environmental conditions and regulations, our waste stream characterization, right? Our system design. What's the best-fit technology? How much would it cost? What are the environmental implications associated with it? So we got a very extensive report to inform what ultimately became the recommendation and policy approach in this plan. So we have a pretty good sense of the costs. And relatively speaking, if you look at the cost of disposal, which is only a part of the total cost, because we have cost of transfer, we have, you know, cost of our recycling program. But if you just look at the cost of disposal today, it's about $39 a ton, okay? If you look at the cost of incineration going forward, it's closer to $150 a ton. So it's several times greater. And yet, I mentioned, you do have the ability to sell energy. That's one of the attractions with waste-to-energy, is that you're creating energy and you can sell it. That $150 a ton is netting, that's taking that into account, right? The total, the gross cost is probably more than that, right? But when you actually apply the revenue from sales of energy, it's still significantly three, four times the cost of local landfilling. But that's not the, this is not just a financial question, but it, as you said, it is expensive. We also looked at the greenhouse gas emissions associated with it. And, you know, they, because you're incinerating things, you have emissions, right? Anytime you're burning something. Now, it's safe, there are air scrubbers and the sort to make those emittents safe, but if you're looking at greenhouse gases, those are unavoidable, and they're significantly higher. So we do have a pretty good sense of the attributes associated with waste-to-energy, and we're continuing to explore it. We've not shut the door. I think it helped us inform, well, what's the next best step for 2019? But we have actually initiated a second study. The results of that study for waste-to-energy are going to build on the knowledge base from 2017. Those study results are due in October and will help inform this next plan update as to whether or not waste-to-energy is the right solution for this regional system.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
I'm on now. Thank you. I also want to, again, as you did, thanks Sabrina Combs for her dedication to attend the meetings on my behalf and bringing the information back. But I have a question. If the recycling goal is 70%, and we are currently at 54%, so my question would be, do you have, over the years, what kind of growth we've actually made, so that we know what do we have to do in order to reach that 70%? Do you have those numbers? I mean, I might not have them now, but...
Right. Certainly, some of that is in the plan itself. If I may, I'll go back to the early 1990s, before we introduced what we refer to as single-stream recycling. Back when we, it was more common to have multi, multiple bins for our recycling. Our regional recycling rate back then was about 19%, right? 19%. So since the 90s, in fact, it might be '93 or something like that, '96, we had these multiple bins, we had a 19% recycling rate. But then, the region took a harmonized approach and said, what if we all had what we call single stream, a single bin for those recyclable materials? In five years, our recycling rates went from 19% to over 40%. They more than doubled, right? And so in the year 2000s or so, we were at that 40, 43%. And it's risen slowly from that 43 to 54%, but it's been 15 years, right? So it's a rather flat curve. We don't see much growth and improvement in our recycling, and I think that's going to continue to be the case unless we take another harmonized approach.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? There we go, Councilmembers Orange.
I would think one piece of our recycling improving is how we change, how we package our products and things too, which would help on this end. There is a couple of things. One is, anyone who knows me, a phrase that I use a lot is, "taking care of your own garbage." I mean, I use a different word, but I really think that it's important that we take care of our own garbage. So I really appreciate the, what sounds like an intense level of thought of, can we incinerate instead of putting it in someone else's backyard? Can we incinerate, get some good out of it, and take care of our own mess, which is important? So I appreciate that. The other thing is, is I know that a Northeast Station has been talked about a lot, and it's important to my family. Do you have any updates on how that's going?
Yeah, we're very excited. We have the budgetary authority to continue that planning activity. It's reflected, the comprehensive plan adopted by our council is very clear that we need a new station in the Northeast. And so we're actively reaching out to what we call these core cities, the most probable host cities in the region. And the first task is to really define what kind of services do they need? I don't want to assume I know that. I mean, we've got a pretty good sense, we've been doing this a long time, but I think we've got to start with, what is it we're trying to accomplish? How do we best serve those communities? The city of Bothell will be able to help inform that as well, right? And then, the discussion will evolve to, how do we best approach the siting process? Because that's a sensitive and difficult effort. And we want to make sure that we are effective in getting the community voice in that process to inform. So we're actively having those conversations right now and, you know, have a vision to be well into the siting process, you know, later this year.
Deputy Mayor?
I had the pleasure of touring the Cedar Hills site, and I was struck by the number of bald eagles.
Yeah.
It's pretty overwhelming. So what's the plan to mitigate their presence and deal with them?
We're trying a multitude of approaches. We, interestingly enough, we have wildlife biologists that are on contract, and they will use pyrotechnics to help just move them along. Eagles come to the landfill to rest, interestingly enough. It's, generally speaking, it's a quiet place, there's not a lot of people, it's relatively calm. They're not there primarily to feed, because their diet is salmon, right, and trout, and that, we don't have that to offer. But they are there to rest, and so sometimes, we'll use pyrotechnics just to move them along. We have had some success with scarecrows that look like the wildlife biologist, because they don't like, they see the wildlife biologist, and they get to know his vehicle and his uniform. And we found when we create a scarecrow that looks a lot like that, they move along. So, you know, there's a variety of, we've tried drones. Quite honestly, that was not very successful. The eagles took the drones out. So, but we had to try. So we will continue to explore a variety of techniques there, but they are a federally protected species as well, and we have to respect that.
Yeah, I was just curious, because the numbers are pretty overwhelming. My last question is, what is the yearly revenue from the selling of the methane gas from the site?
So we are selling both the molecules of the gas, so the actual gas product itself, which, by the way, is enough to heat about 19,000 homes a year in King County. And so we get revenue for selling the gas, and we also get revenue for the environmental attributes of the gas, because it's a renewable energy, and there's a market for the renewable energy credits. energy credits. And in total, between selling the gas and selling on the open market the renewable energy credits, we netted about $8 million last year. And that's money, because we're an enterprise fund, that goes right back in to keep our rates. It basically helps fuel our rate reserves and keep our rates lower.
Wow. Great. Well, thank you. I do appreciate the amendments that were made, and I want to thank Sabrina as well for some really hard work in keeping us informed of the process. And with that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I will move that we approve the proposed, whoops, approve the proposed resolution adopting the King County 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
Second. It's moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew, to approve the proposed resolution adopting the King County 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, put your vote.
Mayor, we may want to do a hand up.
Councilmember McNeil, could you come again on that?
I would be a yes, we support.
Okay. All right, now can we do the roll?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Have fun on your trip.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We appreciate the continued partnership.
Yep, no problem. Thank you, Director. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Have fun at your next council meeting. Okay, moving right along. We have the special presentation, I think it's the deputy chief going to give that for Fire Station Project Management Update? No? P-Dubs? Okay. Jeff, come on up. See, I thought I'd catch you off-guard there. Ready to go.
I'm Jeff Sperry, I'm Fleet and Facilities Manager and Project Lead for the Fire Station Rebuild Project. In April, the city selected OAC Incorporated to provide project management services for these projects. Since April, OAC has assisted in determining the best delivery method for the project and the city. With this, with this, the city has chosen to use progressive design build, and on June 27th, the city and OAC presented to Washington State Capitol Project Advisory Board for the use of progressive design build, and we received a unanimous vote for approval. With us tonight is OAC, and they're going to provide an overview and update for progressive design build for the projects. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Krista Lutz, Project Manager, and Dave Jobs, Principal in Charge from OAC.
Yeah, hello, my name is Krista Lutz, and I'm the Project Manager with OAC Services for the project. We wanted to introduce ourselves, go over project delivery methods, specifically explain what progressive design build is, and how that pertains to the specific projects of the rebuild of Fire Station 42 and 45. So in quick overview of the org chart, everything in this blue is City of Bothell. The yellow on the right-hand side is legal counsel that the city has contracted with. Robin Thaxton is a specialist in design build delivery, and she's helping assist with putting the contract documents together. Everything on the green is the OAC team, and so a broad, comprehensive team, five of us, presented at the PRC, like Jeff mentioned, and received approval for progressive design build, which was a big step towards moving this project forward. Project delivery options. So the project delivery method that you're probably familiar with is a traditional delivery method called design bid build. And it's exactly how it sounds like, three different steps. You design it, then you put it out to bid, the low bidder wins, and then you build it. So when we were brought on board, we challenged that delivery method and did a workshop with a stakeholder group from the city to determine the best delivery method for this project. So out of those other delivery methods, called alternative delivery, there's three methods, general contractor, construction manager, or GCCM, design build, and then progressive design build. I'm not going to go into detail on GCCM or design build, but just wanted to point out, progressive design build, the graphic you see on the bottom right here, what's unique about this approach is that the owner has one contract with the design build team, where the designer is underneath the general contractor as one team. So from a contracting perspective, it's very different than maybe what you're used to. A little overview of progressive design build. So the owner selects a contractor-led design build team, based both on qualifications and cost. It's an efficient and collaborative, innovative design approach, and like I mentioned before, the owner has one contract with the design build team, made up of the contractor and designer. The design team, design build team works with the city to develop the program, design, cost, and schedule. So that's, again, a unique approach versus having one designer do the design, a contractor build it. So it's all-in-one, and a very comprehensive, collaborative approach.
It's kind of a big deal with this, because you have two, you potentially have four projects, you have the two fire stations and maybe two temp facilities. So being able to have all that work within one contracting package under one team is a big deal, and you can do that with progressive design build. That's one of the key reasons why we went that way.
So just so you know, the, so we're recording this live, and so people can't hear you unless you're by the mic, but...
The other unique thing about design build teams is that they can select subcontractors based on a best value method. So again, both qualifications and cost, rather than going with a low bidder. So you get the best value out of your subcontractors, in addition to your design build team. Construction often overlaps with ongoing design, and overall, it's the fastest delivery method from the time the design build team is procured to close out of the project. And I know that's very important, especially to the fire chief. Cost certainty on this kind of project is attained when you negotiate the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, with the design build team. So that's also cost certainty that you would have sooner than in the traditional design bid build delivery method. The graphic down below shows a little bit of the process, how things aren't step-by-step, but sort of co-mingled, where you can plan, design, cost estimate continuously, you can do phased permitting during the design process, and that bleeds into construction. So it's a much more fluid process. Project-specific items that meet the RCW 3910-300 criteria for use of progressive design build, it provides greater opportunity for innovation and efficiencies. So both sites are small and constrained, which are either going to require complex phasing during construction to keep the stations operational, or temporary facilities off-site somewhere. The other benefit is coordination of two stations, where you can gain efficiencies by lesson learned from the first station, and taking that over to the next station, and building design standards, and also construction standards and means and methods. There's overall savings in the project delivery time, so you have efficiency and sequencing of design and construction with one team for both stations and the temporary facilities. Like Dave was trying to say earlier, but you might not have heard, it's really four distinct projects all rolled into one. So again, if you did it in the traditional delivery method, you would have had to do all four projects likely separately. And so that would have been both an administrative contracting effort, a timing increase, and this is all rolled into one project, four projects, two stations, two temporary stations. Additionally, there's flexibility in subcontractor procurement, again, the best value selection, which can do design assist or design build under the main design builder, phased procurement, and inclusion of small and minority-owned business enterprises. As these are fire stations, the activities are highly specialized, so there is certain equipment that needs to go into fire stations, decontamination, emergency communication, special requirements for vehicle maintenance and operations, especially during the period where you might be housing apparatus and temp facilities, making sure they're still in heated facilities, there's still exhaust systems in place for exhaust of the apparatus. And the temporary facilities are an integral project, an integral part of the project to ensure continuous operations and the success of the whole project. So with those criteria that we presented at the PRC, we were approved for progressive design build. So the public benefit of this delivery method is, again, maintaining critical life safety operations during construction of these two fire stations and potentially two temporary facilities, unless you phase it. There's a substantial fiscal benefit by speeding up the overall delivery method, and there's reduced liability and risk exposure to the city based on the contract, delivery method of one contract with one design build team. A little bit more about the schedule. So the first line item on here is the phase we just entered. We just put out our request for proposals to design builders. There's going to be a four-month procurement period, and then for the council meeting on November 5th, we plan to be here again in front of you, presenting the design builder's contract for approval. The way this contract is set up is a multi-phased contract, and a unique approach is that in what we call Phase 1A, it'll be the validation estimating period to bring both stations to 30% design. That'll take about five months until spring of next year, and during that time period, we really want the design builder's input on how to deliver the project best. So the scenario in the graphic that's laid out at the bottom kind of shows the scenario, where again, Phase 1A is 30% design, getting an initial validation of what the overall cost will be, but then developing the guaranteed maximum price for the first station, Station 45, to then execute a GMP amendment for the contract. While that first station is on hold, the design for Station 45 is finalized, and then the GMP contract is negotiated for Station 42. This is only one scenario of how this possibly could happen. As part of the requirements during Phase 1A, it'll be the design builder's responsibility to help us develop the best approach in terms of phasing, contracting, and scheduling of all of this. And with that, just a little graphic of where the stations are, which I'm sure you're aware of. The red circles indicate where we think the temp facilities can be to still allow for the response time of less than a minute in the dark green shading. And then it's a little bit hard to see, but there are two test-fit designs for each of the stations indicated here. So with that, we just wanted to give a brief overview of the project, and why we chose this delivery method, and open it up for any questions.
Councilmember Agnew.
I can guarantee you, the chief is not the only one that wants this done quickly. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking forward to meeting with you in November and moving forward. It looks like we have an aggressive timeline, I'd like to see it a little bit more aggressive, if I could, but, you know, we have to do what we have to do. Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to these two stations being put together.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you for the presentation. Could you go into a little bit more detail on the difference between a progressive design build and a standard design build?
Yeah, so progressive design build doesn't mean progressive in the sense of innovative so much, it's more that you progress through the design. So it means that you bring the design build team onboard, essentially at zero where we are now, and then develop the design with the design builder, and progress through stages of designing, estimating, getting to guaranteed maximum price, and then into contracting. With traditional design build delivery, you will have basically bridging documents with a design that's already in place, and then there's a design competition where you ask your design builders to propose how they would design this project. And so there is a difference there in terms of timing of where the city was in their design, which was at the zero level, essentially, there was a pre-design study, but not much. So getting that, to that point, would have taken a certain amount, which is why we decided not to go with that option. In addition to that, there's been some industry pushback for traditional design build, because there's a lot of effort put into these design competitions to come up with comprehensive designs, and there's really not compensation for the teams that don't end up getting selected. So those are some of the key differences, I would say. I don't know if there's anything else you want to...
Yeah, just, this is Dave Jobs. This is, the one big difference is that you start with the same team from the very beginning, from your conceptual design, all the way through to the end, with progressive design build. And with design build, you actually have a preliminary design team come in, get it to 30%, they go away, you put that out to bid, and then you have a new team come in, and sometimes there's a little bit of, you know, what was really the intent of the first design, and making sure that's getting picked up in the real design. And so there's, so with design build, that's kind of a weakness, I'd say, or progressive design build, again, it's the same team from the very beginning all the way through to the very end, so you don't have those interruptions, you know, in intent and design, so...
So it puts a little more of the onus on the selection of the team, so that, I guess, just vetting the team and finding the right team is more critical.
Yes, exactly. You're bringing them in early, your contractor and your architect and design team, so there's more consulting involved, right? Your contractor isn't just building, they're designing. But that's what's great, is that you get that one, one team that you're working with the whole way, all the way through, so...
All right.
Point of responsibility.
Thank you.
I didn't know you can get contractors and architects in the room together, that's awesome. Deputy Mayor. Oh, sorry, Councilmember McAuliffe, go ahead.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for your presentation. It kind of reminds me that progressive design build is like building one building altogether and not separating each of them separately. Is that kind of a good concept?
Well, it's designing one building altogether from beginning to end, but in our case, it's really two buildings and two temporary.
Right. Now, we just answered my second question, which is the temporary facilities. I know you showed the location, but what's the timing?
So for Station 45, we've identified a site that's possible in Cedar Park. It's a single-family residence that could potentially be adapted for housing with a Quonset hut, so a kind of a tent structure for the apparatus. So that's one site we're investigating. We're also exploring other sites that the city owns, and the design builder will be responsible for helping us vet those sites and determine what the most cost-effective approach is.
So I imagine that they, that people will be in the temporary sites, and then you'll demolish, correct?
Correct.
The current sites, 45 and 42, and then start to build. So they'll be in the temporary sites quite a while, is that correct?
Yeah, construction, and again, that depends a little bit on phasing, on what time of the year you start construction, but it's 12 to 14 months for construction of each of the sites, is what we anticipate. So the temporary facilities would probably be a little bit longer than that, just, you know, get them ready ahead of time and make sure everything's operational and commissioned.
And I am encouraged by the fact that you are doing a progressive design, which is going to give us quite a bit earlier timeline to bring it to an end. So I really like that, because I agree with Councilmember Agnew, is we'd like to have this done very aggressively.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when OAC was brought on board, the original schedule that the city had published was for Fire Station 45 to be open fall of 2021, and Station 42, fall of 2023. Our approach already brings that, moves that forward six months to spring of those years, and we're hoping that with assistance of the design builder, we can move that up even further.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So I'm trying to understand this flow chart. So is the contractor a subcontractor to you, and the architect a subcontractor to the contractor, or are they both subcontractors to you?
It's a separate contract, so OAC...
Where's this, sorry?
I think it was...
So I assume you're kind of... So I assume you're kind of right there with owner. OIC.
Yeah, we're a consultant to the owner, so we're acting as the project manager with Jeff as the project lead. And that's a completely separate contract from the design build contract. The design build contract is where the designer and the contractor form a team, but the designer is underneath the contractor. So the graphic that's, I guess, on your screen right now...
So it's the architect is a subcontractor to the contractor?
Yes.
Okay. So then, how is the architect chosen, or do they, are they bidding as a team and then you choose them as a team?
Yes, they form what's called a design build team, and they submit as that team as one entity.
And you'll be doing that separately for each of the fire stations, or will you be choosing the same team for both of the fire stations?
It's the same team for both fire stations, and that's one of the huge benefits of doing it this way, that you can do it with one team for both stations as well as the temporary stations.
Okay. I guess that's it. I'm interested in this process. I haven't seen this process before. I'm an architect, so I kind of prefer the architect not to be the subcontractor, but that's just me.
You know, there has been some, some architects feel like that because they feel like they lose control in respect to their relationship with the owner. But I think there are teams out there now that are sophisticated enough and have enough respect for each other that they actually are really, you know, well-working, well-oiled machines as a team and know, you know, whose responsibility is design and when to step back and whose responsibility is estimating and contracting. So I think that risk is going away.
I'll be interested to see how it works out. I always worry, you know, design is an iterative process, and so to curtail that, sometimes you don't get the best results. That's my only thought.
Councilmembers, audience.
I'm, there will be, as I'm understanding it, the big process of bidding between the contractor, between architecting a plan and then who's going to build it, that's out of the, that's not part of this process anymore, which I'm going to enjoy Googling, you know, more information about this. But will there be bidding processes happening for subcontractors?
There will be public procurement for subcontractors, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. Everybody had a chance to ask you questions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Next on the list is the City Manager Council Committee Reports. No, she's just one foot out the door, ready to go on vacation. No reporting from there. Any committee reports from council?
Yeah? Councilmember Olson. Just Snohomish County tomorrow, the PSRC Vision 2050 Plan, the draft plan is going to come out, I believe, July 19th, and then it'll have a 60-day review period. So that happens right in our August recess, so it'll be challenging to get reviewed and out to the council, but I have faith in our planning director, Mr. Kaderman. So, yeah, that was what was the big topic of our last Snohomish County tomorrow meeting.
All right. Any other committee reports? Good, okay. Next is the public comment period. Oh, now that's a bit hard by now. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants for their time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And the one and only sign-up sheet I have is Dale Lynn.
Hello, I'm Dale Lynn, and I'm Dale Lynn, and I'm representing a newly formed group called the Bothell Off Leash Association. What we're doing and the purpose of the Off Leash Association is when we finally have an off-leash area, that somebody has to be there to help maintain it, someone to enforce the rules. And that's what the purpose of the Off Leash Association is. But we're also trying to work with, we'll try to work through the pros' process to get an off-leash area. Right now, in the cities of Kenmore, Bothell, and Woodenville, there's really nowhere that you can play with your dog outside of, unless you have a yard. If you have a yard big enough, you can do that. Otherwise, you can't anywhere. And so what we're doing is we'll work through the pros' process, we'll try to bring some funding with us from our own private donations, because, but we also, we want to explore more passive solutions. There's three types of dogs' solutions off-leash. One is a dedicated off-leash facility, most likely the dog park, okay? The most expensive solution. Then there's shared use facilities, which is you share other facilities with other passive recreation, and there's also off-leash trails. We just wanted to bring awareness to the council that we're going to be working, we're going to try to raise awareness within Bothell and Kenmore, and even people from, like I said, Woodenville and Northern Kirkland, because there's just nowhere within miles for people to go. If you want to drive hard up, you can go to Merrimore, you can go up to Mill Creek, you can go out to Richmond Beach. But, so that's what we're here to do, and we'll try to work through the pros' process to ensure that we can come up with a creative solution. If you have questions, you can email me at bothlloffleash, all one word, at gmail.com. And I've met some of you already, and I hope to meet the rest of you.
All right, thank you. Next is Al Fegumam.
I'm Al, as you all know. I gave you two things I want to talk about. It may take me more than three minutes. First of all, address will be fireworks. I heard your discussions last month about fireworks. This will not take long. I just have a suggestion. I thought about what the problems were that you were dealing with, and my suggestion is, and maybe you already considered it, I don't know, is that fireworks on the Fourth of July should be prohibited in residential areas, but should be allowed in designated areas that the city designates. In other words, the city could say to a homeowner, if you want to shoot off fireworks, there's a park or a ball field so many blocks or yards away from your home, that is where you are to go to shoot off your fireworks. And we have the ball fields down here where the music in the park is, I think that would be an ideal place, because there's nothing there that's going to burn. You're not going to have a firework land on somebody's house in that huge area. So that's my thought on fireworks, that it would be possible for the city to tell people, you can shoot them off in the places where we say you can shoot them off, but not in your own yard, because you can set somebody's house on fire. We've seen things on the news about this already, about how a guy has patio door blown out by fireworks, so, just a thought. The other issue I wanted to talk to you about is affordable housing. As you guys know, I live in the Canyon Park area in Green Acres, so-called mobile home park. Mobile homes are not mobile. They're not movable, there's no wheels on my home. My home is not any more movable than yours is. So it's a misnomer. They're only mobile from the factory to the site where they're installed. They're really manufactured homes. And the problem that we have is that in places like Green Acres, and there's more than one mobile home park, it's affordable, it's affordable housing. Basically, that's what it is. It's an affordable housing park. Mobile homes are far less expensive, I should say manufactured homes, cost less than a stick-built house. And most of the people who live in them are lower income, and this is a senior citizen park, so you've got to be over 55 to live there, and most of the people in the park are widows, living on a very small amount of money. We have a great landlord, he only raises our rent 50 bucks every two years, and included in our rent is all utilities except for telephone and electricity. So we have a very good deal. He's very sensitive to the needs of the elderly. The county assessor is trying to do to Green Acres and other mobile home parks the same thing that they did to Country Village, and he's hoping to get the same results, so that the city of Bothell will be pleased to have the additional income from that land when it has townhouses on it, or condos, or apartment buildings, or whatever, instead of the mobile homes that serve the needs of the people my age. And the problem is if the landowner is taxed to the point where he has to sell because he can no longer be profitable, because he can't raise our rents to the point where we can't live there, we're faced with the fact that we might be out of there anyway. The thing that's going to talk to me about whether or not the mobile home park is protected from sale, but I don't know whether that's, I hope it is.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
What?
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
As soon as I can, yeah. As soon as Wayne has...
I'd like now, please. Your time's up, so we...
The reason I'm bringing this up to you, I know you guys have nothing to do with assess valuations, but I know that the county will listen to you more than you'll listen to me. And since everybody talks out of both sides of the mouth, you want more tax money, the land is worth more, blah, 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 and at the same time, you want affordable housing. So the...
All right, thank you. We're going to cut it out there.
We need to talk to the county about easing up a little bit on the assess valuations for people.
All right, thank you for coming in. Has anybody else would like to provide public comment? Go ahead, come up, give your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Shane Anderson. This is my first time attending a city council meeting of any kind, to be honest. I only had one issue that I wanted to bring up. It's not a well-known or glamorous issue, and that is ranked choice voting. Are any of you on the council aware of what that means? Can I see perhaps like a show of hands? Okay, well, there's one. I don't represent any organization, I'm just a concerned citizen, and I want to do my part to see if I can get our city to adopt ranked choice voting, because it is fairer and better represents the needs of the people than first past the post, which is the system in place in most of our country. So my only question to the council is, what can I do to get involved and see that this issue gets brought to the right people's attention? What can I do to make this happen?
So the public comment period, we don't engage public comment, we give you the opportunity to speak for three minutes. We can connect you with, no, she's already getting her card out for you, the city manager, she's going to be on vacation though, so don't expect a call back right away, but maybe she'll have the assistant city manager help her with that while she's gone. Sound good?
Yes, thank you for your time.
Yep, no problem, thank you. Does anybody else want to provide public comment? You only get to go once per meeting. Good effort, though. A for effort. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda, nothing's been pulled, is there a motion?
I move to pass the consent agenda.
Second. Moved by the deputy mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember McNeil, absent and excused. I guess I'll bring that up in the council conversations, because the committee report, I forgot to give out my committee report. I'll just do that in the council conversations. Okay, public hearing, how are we doing? You guys want to take a break? I'm by this side. No, everybody's fine except you. All right, so we're going to have a public hearing, AB 19-112, extension of the interim ordinance relating to small cell wireless deployment, one of the most fascinating topics I've seen in eight years of being on council. Am I officially opening a public hearing right now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm officially opening the public hearing, and we have Director Kaderman to give us the lowdown.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The Federal Communications Commission set a deadline of January 14th of this year for jurisdictions to comply with new regulations and rules that restrict local regulation of small wireless facilities. In response, the council approved an interim ordinance at your meeting on January 8th of this year. The interim ordinance addressed the most immediate requirements and provided six months to develop permanent regulations to comply with the FCC rules. The top priority was the development of design standards for the downtown. The FCC imposed a deadline of April 14th of this year for that. Staff worked with, staff from Public Works, the city attorney's office, and the community development department worked with outside legal counsel and wireless service providers and the planning commission to adopt workable design requirements into the Bothell Design and Construction Standards by the April deadline. So we achieved that. The staff has continued to work on permanent regulations with outside legal counsel. Due to the complexity of integrating those regulations and rule changes into the existing code for other wireless facilities, the staff needs additional time to complete that work. Because the interim regulations will expire in less than two weeks, staff is asking council to renew the interim ordinance for another six months as allowed by state law. The interim ordinance will be repealed upon adoption of the permanent regulations. The public hearing tonight is required prior to council action on extending the interim ordinance. There are no changes to the interim ordinance that you adopted in January of this year. So after considering the testimony this evening from the public hearing, staff is recommending that council adopt the proposed ordinance renewing the interim wireless communications facilities regulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Weird, there's no questions. Is there anybody from the public that would like to provide public comment? I have nobody signed up on the sign-up sheet. Seeing none, all right, is there a motion?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance as written or amended following the public hearing, so.
You guys are on top of it tonight. Moved by the deputy mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew, to approve the proposed ordinance as written. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm just going to say real quickly, I've been attending the planning commission meetings, and it's way more complicated than you would think, trying to come up with design standards for standard protocols for hiding and disguising the cell technology, so, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember McNeil, absent and excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are on to... Oh, we already did that one. Okay, AB 19-114, surplus property update, and we have Ms. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So over the past 12 months, you have received several updates on our surplus property. About a year ago, you received a very in-depth report about the history of all of our surplus property and the cleanups from the city manager, and since the first of the year, you've received several updates from community development with regards to massing and what you want to see on our properties. And then just this past month, you had that, just last, two weeks ago, had that really great presentation from our consultants with regards to the cleanup on property D. My information isn't as in-depth, or it's exciting, but I wanted to give you just a quick snippet of where we are with regards to getting these properties to market. So on Lot A, as you know, that went to market in April, the offers closed at the end of May, and we are currently evaluating all of our offers, and the hope is that we can bring you a proposal in late summer, early fall. Lot D, as you know, is actually ready to, you know, it's buildable now. We're waiting on the consent decree from the State Department of Ecology. I understand that that goes to a public hearing and, out for public comment, August 5th, and after that, it's just a matter of six weeks and having it approved. Fingers crossed, October 1st, that we can put that property on the market. I am going to lump together the Civic Center lot and lots EF and G because they're connected. And what we're doing with those lots is we still don't understand the contamination on those lots and the history of the contamination. So the Public Works Department has hired Floyd Snyder to review the existing and historical data for the lots and will identify the data gaps. And then there's still, once we identify what the contamination looks like, then we can go to cleanup, but it's going to take a while to get those on the market. It's going to be 2020 or 2021. And then finally, we have Lot P South, which is the city, as of this last month, was successfully enrolled in the Petroleum Technical Assistance Program, and that is a very quick... And that is a very quick process. And our goal is to get a letter of no further action by October, and we can put the property on the market then. And that's, that's it. Is there any questions?
Any questions? It's Councilmember Mikolov.
Thank you. So what I was reviewing, first of all, I guess my first question, I'll start with A.
Yes, ma'am.
So the offers, it is closed right now, at the end of May. How many offers did we receive?
We received two offers.
Okay. And, go ahead, is that it?
I just didn't say, I just, the offers that we have on the table is, I'm not willing to discuss until we've had an opportunity to review them and make a decision.
Right, okay. And then on D, I was reading that during the biomediation phase, that development can occur.
That's correct.
And now are we, I thought we were in this phase currently.
We are currently in that phase, but because there has been another, I'm going to have to read, let me look at my notes here.
Jeanie, do you want me to jump in real quick?
That would be great.
So we have the additional Wexler site, which wasn't included in any of the agreed orders or the consent decree. And so we're amending the consent decree for the Bothell Service Center to include the Wexler site. So that's what Ms. Ash was talking about with the additional process. Once that gets added in, it gets approved by the courts, then we have the, that amended consent decree. And we, that's valuable for the property. And so we want that process to be complete and approved before we put it on the market.
So then let me ask you, so I'm clear. This is what Ms. Ash spoke about, about ecology in that time period? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. It's just another piece of this. All right, thank you. And then on, let's see. So the review data, I thought, I guess I'm asking the question because I'm not really sure of how this happened, but we sold the Civic Center lot previously.
Yes.
But right now, we're going back to review the data and the issues concerning cleanup. So I don't know how that...
This is actually the, on the corner there, that is not a part of, that was not a part of the Civic Center lot, the old dry cleaner on the pad there. That's what's being researched.
Okay, and then there is some thought of dividing that into two lots, correct?
Yes, that's, that will be, that will be an option for council to consider.
And if we did that, by dividing it into the two lots, would we have a contaminated lot for both of them, or just for one?
Just for one.
Something I would like to see us move forward with then, is to consider that. Thank you, thank you very much.
We already have council direction to do that.
Oh, good.
So as part of the, your study sessions, you directed us to work on that boundary line adjustment, so we'll be doing that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmembers, audience?
Only a comment. Because, because if you live here in Bothell and you're trafficking through Bothell, you see these lots lie fallow. And I just want to say how much I appreciate staff working on these lots. We inherited quite a mess, and everyone's peddling as fast as they can to get these lots sellable and up and running. So I appreciate your efforts, the unsung hero part of making it happen. But no one needs to panic. It just is what it is, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Deputy Mayor.
I want to echo those thoughts. There is nothing more important to council than offloading these properties. So if anyone thinks that we're dragging our feet, we are not dragging our feet. Absolutely not. This is just a big albatross around our neck. So I appreciate your work and the update.
I actually have the easy, easy part. It's been, it's astonishing the amount of work that Public Works and Community Development has put into this. And I'm just a cattle prod right now, pushing it along.
Thank you, Community Development and Public Works.
Any other questions or comments? We're good. Thank you, Ms. Ash. And the deputy mayor really wants to go on a break. Is everybody okay with that? Take a break? All right, so we're going to go on break. We'll be back at 7:50.
All right, the Bothell City Council is back from recess. We are going into AB 19-115, which is the Economic Development Dashboard. And we have Ms. Ash, once again.
Thank you, sir. So I think that we all intuitively know that Bothell's economy is thriving and strong right now. But in order to make policy decisions and create programs, we need solid data. So that's when we turned, when the city turned to Western Washington University Department of Economics and Business Research. I got it right. So, in any event, and we worked with them to create what we're calling an Economic Development Dashboard. And this dashboard is a combination of information from city revenues, local demographics, and regional data. And when you pull all of that information together, it creates a story, and it allows you to make policy decisions. The story's a little bit different, I think, for anybody who's reading it and interpreting it. For me, when I go through the report, you know, there's some things I look at, for example, construction costs. When you track construction costs time over time, you can, there's a couple of things that can happen. One is that you can, if you see them go down, you can see the beginning of a recession. You can also use that as a planning tool to like, perhaps maybe plan to spend some money on capital equipment or make big investments when you, when you see that the, building investments, when you see that the construction costs are going down. The other piece, for example, are retail sales. If you decide to recruit, we know here from this information, and this is really good, solid information, that the most, that makes most sense for the city to recruit for vehicle parts stores. Also, too, another thing here that is really interesting to me, and this report is also meant to inspire more questions and create conversations. To me, this piece of information about assessed value of property by sector is fascinating. When you look at the manufacturing, that's the largest, that has the most amount of assessed value. And so my question is, is that, are we looking at floor space or are we looking at property? And how can we take this information and help it inform the sub-area plan in Canyon Park? So, again, like I said, this was a collaborative effort. This was done with Western Washington University Community Development Finance, and also to our IT department even helped out a little bit. At this point, I'd like to introduce James McCafferty from Western Washington University. He is the Executive Director of the program. He also, too, led this project and helped us put it together. And he is going to give you his key takeaways of this report, which, again, I think is super interesting because he's got an outside point of view. So he'll be able to give you some unique perspective.
Good evening. I'm fortunate I get to do these talks a couple of times a week all over the state. And so I'm in a lot of different communities' data, and I get to have these really interesting discussions, which often lead to more questions than I brought talking points for. So I am looking forward to discussion tonight. So, our center, we deliver custom research services, and so the public sector and private sector both utilize us. We produce the Peter Sound Economic Forecaster, which the city is a subscriber for. So if that's something that interests you, there are copies of that floating around inside the city. And then we also do executive education programs down in the region here as well. So we've got a lot of different things going on. One of the most common questions I get from folks is, what do you read? How do you know this stuff? And so we decided that maybe social media was going somewhere. So we launched a social media platform about seven months ago, and we actually post four to six different things a day of, that we're looking at. So if you're looking for some interesting tidbits from very different sources, stuff you may not see, you can follow us online on your, wherever your favorite vice of choice is. So in the end, really what we're trying to do is create analyses that inform, engage, and encourage innovation. We don't come to cities, environments, and counties, and ports, et cetera, with great answers to exactly what to do. But we will help you develop frameworks. We can help you develop conversations that help you make a decision that makes some sense for you. Every community has kind of their own direction, and we just want to make sure people are using good data to make those kinds of choices. So really, just some key takeaways, and this is really hard, there's no graphs and charts and stuff, so this is a little weird for me. Bothell is facing opportunity on a lot of fronts, and it's finding itself, and I'm a little bit sympathetic, because you're finding yourself getting squeezed from the south, the north, and kind of both directions from the south. And that shows up in the data. Today's announcement with Amazon building a giant building in Bellevue isn't going to help you get easier decisions, because you're going to start seeing some more folks wanting to move into this area because of that. Because when you look at the data, if you look at the path of least resistance, it's northward, and from a property value perception, perspective, this is a great spot. And so Redmond and Bellevue are much, much more expensive, and you're going to see that funneling coming up. Southward out of Bellevue, you've got a real traffic issue at this point, which they're working to alleviate over time, 10 years. But in the meantime, north is where those folks are going to go. Construction sector generates about 38% of your taxable retail sales, which is interesting because in most communities, it's the retail sector that generates the most taxable retail sales. And that has a lot to do with your growth, which is interesting to me. It's not something I see a whole lot of. Your general merchandise and supercenters are driving your 31% in your retail sector, which is not uncommon as well. You actually are doing a retail capture, when you look at a per capita basis, you're capturing about, total about $263 per Bothell person through your general merchandise supercenter sector. So think about that, if you have a family of four, that's $1,200, $1,300 per year. So that's a pretty phenomenal number, and exciting, but also interesting from thinking about landscape of a community. So this is likely to change, and we note this in the report, with time and volume of development projects and things going on in the macroeconomy, we expect to see this shift around. One of the general trends we've noticed in the state is the construction sector is doing a lot more out-of-state sales. And we're seeing that, a lot more prefab, a lot more pre-built type things that are leaving the state, which is great news, actually, for a lot of communities. It spreads out the volatility a little bit, so those jobs are a little more stable. You have a very high median income, it's higher than Kings and Snohomish Counties, it's higher than the state median. And again, that's a direct result of you pulling people out of Redmond, which is where a lot of those high-end jobs are in the state. So you're doing well from that. Your citizens are also well-educated, about 30% of your residents here have a bachelor's degree. Washington State is actually towards the bottom of people going from high school to college and getting a four-year degree, which is really interesting. And so that, again, positions you well for location-type things, because you have a very skilled, educated workforce that a lot of companies would find attractive. Commute times, because of all these things, your commute times are higher than a lot of other places in the region. You don't have the worst commute, that's I-5 between Everett and Seattle, but you do have a lot of commuters, and I apologize, because this is backwards on the slide here. More people commute out of Bothell than in, which you would expect. It's about 50% more people commute out than are commuting in. And you would expect that. So that didn't surprise us, but it is something to think about, you know, as, from a community development perspective, that you do have a lot of people bringing those wages back home. Median house prices is 4% below the, and I put this in quotes, because the word affordability is completely misused in this context. But mathematically, your median house price is 4% below the affordability point, which means that your median house is slightly less than the 33 1/3 of the average wage. And of course, we always put a little asterisk there and say, no one buys a median house and no one earns an average wage. So it doesn't work like that, but it is the metric that we use. You have upward trends in building permit revenue, which is a no-brainer, business licensing revenue, which, again, more people are starting businesses and doing things with businesses, so you should be seeing that. And of course, gross business, gross business income is tracking really closely with the statewide growth, which is great. You're actually tracking a little faster, you're actually gaining year over year on the state average growth in gross business income. And I should caveat, all the data that, I could spend like an hour just on the caveats. Gross business income are people that report income with a filing address inside the city of Bothell. So it won't capture every business in Bothell, and it may capture businesses that are outside of Bothell, but it's the best we can do. When we look at industry clusters, and there's a couple of things I want you to, the LQ here is a location quotient, which is mathematically, US average is 1.0, so any number above 1 means you have more than the US average. So you have a net capture in that sector. So you've got, when we look at this, when you look at, think about this, and in the report, there's this really cool 3D chart, and it's sideways, and it's, it maps out your industry clusters and tells you whether they're shrinking or growing, most years are growing, whether they pay above average or, above or below average wages. So when we look at this, like, machine manufacturing, you've got four, four times, four and a half times what the national average would say, and they're expecting about a 30% growth within that industry. So that's how you would look at this chart. And of course, you look at professional services, you've got almost double the number, and you're expecting 120% growth. Financial services is your, is your big grower there, at 155%. And of course, media, which I thought was really interesting for you, is your highest average wage sector cluster is about double the size, and about 110% growth is forecasted. So really interesting stuff on your cluster map there, which you can just take home and use to help you rest easy. When we talk about leakage, and she mentioned this, the vehicle parts, you have leakage there, and the leakage, what that means is that when we look at the amount of sales that are happening here in Bothell versus what happens on a state average, you have less. And so it means, in theory, people are going somewhere else, and it's really the only way to calculate this. So you have a leakage in vehicle parts, you're one of the few communities I've been in that has a leakage of food and beverage, which is interesting to me. That's very uncommon, especially in communities that have a high amount of people commuting in for high-wage jobs. They tend to pick up stuff on their way home, like me, it's my night to cook, I'll pick something up on the way home. Building materials, and then, of course, health and personal care in there. Your labor inventory is not surprising to me at all. About 18.6% of the people that work here in Bothell are in the education sector, I want you to think K-12, you also have some college presence here, so that shouldn't, that shouldn't surprise you. Though, that's actually great in most communities, it creates a really stable income stream, really good stability in those jobs, recession, a little resilient, and so that's, that's a good thing in most communities. Professional and business services, a little higher than I would expect, but again, you have a good cluster there, we saw that, and good wages and good growth. So 17 and 1/2% there. Manufacturing, 11%. Manufacturing is actually, the labor demand for manufacturing in general is shrinking through automation, and it's not because they're laying people off and bringing in the robots, they can't find the people to do the jobs. And so they're, they're having to do a lot of this automation process because there's not workers to do it. And so that 11% is a, is a great percentage. And of course, leisure, which I imagine here is all kinds of really good things, because I have spent my time in Bothell, that's, that's a healthy 10%. Cost of living, your composite score is lower than Seattle, Bellevue, Redmond, and there's a great chart in the, in the report, you can see how, a bar chart, you can see how that looks. It's actually significant, which is why you're seeing that growth coming out of Redmond, out of Kirkland, out of Bellevue. I get a 20% plus raise by just driving up the freeway. If I'm making $120,000, $150,000 a year, a 20% raise is real money. And so it becomes, that's why those tolls work so well on 405. Because if I have to pay $20 a day in tolls, but I make $10,000 more a year, it's okay, right? And so it's, the economics of it works, the reality of it sometimes is tough. There are significant variances, though, within the cost areas of the communities, and above the bar chart, there's a table that kind of shows different things like housing and utilities and things, so you can see what's driving the composites in that. And of course, I'll, it's a no-brainer, but housing is the major factor there. So this is the summary table from the Economic Forecaster. We're, we're expecting in our forecast work, we're seeing that general economy is slowing, that's, that's a no-brainer, we've seen that on the national front, we're seeing it here in our, in our own region. We like seeing news like we've seen this last couple of weeks about Apple and et cetera, we like that those are high-wage jobs that causes our model to push things out a little bit more. But really, that's what we've been doing for the last year and a half, is pushing things out by a quarter or two. The slowdown is there, we're already seeing it in building, we're already seeing it in a number of other places. Is it a recession? The short answer is not yet. But we, we do not have the longest expansion on record, so there's that. But all things being equal, the one thing I can say about a recession, when, when we do come to that point in, in our economic cycle, and the economy's a cycle, and we will get there, we think it's going to look very different than the recessions we've had in the past. It's possible, large metropolitan areas may not see much in the recession, whereas more rural communities will see a lot. There's a vast majority of the United States hasn't recovered from the first recession. All of the economic, a majority of the economic growth that's happened in the United States since 2008 has happened in 147 counties. I mean, it's out of 3,100. There's a lot of pieces of the country that really have not recovered or are just getting to recovery. So we happen to live in this really, really unique place from an economics perspective, where we've seen phenomenal growth from high-wage jobs and been able to see this kind of, kind of recovery. So I want to be able to answer questions, so.
I just want to add that this was just a very high-level kind of overlook. Happy to sit down and go through some of the details of this. Also, too, the goal is, is to update this on a quarterly basis, so that we can track the economy and see how we're doing and spot trends. I think it's super important that we're able to identify trends and what's happening. And then, also, the other goal is, is to create a more detailed, robust report that is, like, is in your packet once a year. So with that, we'll take questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I love data. I loved reading this, it was so fascinating. I have two questions that I can think of right now. So if you could go back to, was it employment sectors? What is media? Is it, I don't think it is what I think it is.
I think it's sales. I think it's sales, I think they're sales positions. I don't think it has anything to do with the Seattle Times.
The labor would show, media, which, the Seattle Times would probably show up in some of that. It's challenging, okay, this is where the labor data gets really interesting. So who decides what you're classified at?
Right.
Is not you. And so it partially depends upon how the company is determined to be. So if they are considered a media company and they meet the definition of a media, which is the NICS code, so you can look that up from the Census Bureau and read exactly what that is. The Department of Revenue classifies that, that company into that sector, that's where their employees show up. And then the location is based on how they fill out their paperwork with the state on where those employees actually work. And that sometimes is not completely accurate either.
Okay. It just seemed puzzling to me. So, next level, will we be, or have we started looking into identifying action items based on the data that we're seeing?
Again, the, the only action I have, item I have right now is, this is inspiring more questions. I would love to sit down with community development and look at this, you know, assessed value of the property, and what does that mean, especially out in Canyon Park. The, the goal of this information primarily is to keep you informed of our, of the local economy. Like I said, inspire questions, policies, and programs, and to update this on a quarterly basis.
Okay. I will take you up on your offer to dig deeper, for sure. I, I think this is fascinating, and the more that we know, the better we, better policy we make. And then the last question I had, as you said, follow you on social media, but I couldn't find you, so.
I will send you links.
Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Data does certainly describe kind of what actions we may need to take in the future. And so I appreciate that we're going to, you know, have questions, and then that'll lead us to what programs and policies we want to see come forward. But I think my first concern is not a question so much, it's that when you talk about our Bothell, our, our population having 30% bachelor's degrees, I go a little further into that and say, but our high school diploma is at 15, and our associate degree is at 10%. 10% to me for associate is pretty low. I'm looking at the jobs that we want to educate our students for, and so if I look over at manufacturing at 11%, what degrees are needed for them to enter into those jobs?
When you look at this data, and I have not pulled the Bothell one specifically, but going from but going from about the 40 other ones I've pulled from around the state, a vast majority of jobs in the next three to five years are going to require bachelor's or higher degrees. It is a very small percentage that are less than that. If you go back to the 1970s, if you've had less than a bachelor's degree, it is likely you've not had real wage growth. That the wage growth, and now there's outliers. Michael Dell does not have a bachelor's degree, right?
Neither did Bill Gates.
Yes. So, there are outliers, and there's always exceptions, and they make wonderful stories. But when we unpack the data, the vast majority of people that have not found advanced degrees of some form, bachelor's or higher, have not found real wage growth. Now, it doesn't mean the job requires the degree. It's the, it's the education, the training, it's how that person presents themselves in a job, and it's all the meta-factors that actually causes that wage change. So, there is good data here.
So to alleviate your concern, I think that if you were to dive down into that data, the 10% of associate's degree, the primary reason for that is Cascadia College is a feeder college to UW-Bothell, and the majority of their students actually leave Cascadia and go straight into UW-Bothell. And that may be one reason why you're seeing that, that certain statistic. With regards to manufacturing and the lack of jobs, we are really fortunate in, in this region in Washington State to have a variety of really, really great technical programs, like Washington Institute, as well as Everett and Edmonds, all have programs that, for training. What our local employers are finding is that they're having a hard time recruiting. Manufacturing, not just in this area, but all over, is not considered sexy. We're finding that our high school students don't understand what, what manufacturing is. That's a great, you know, living wage job. So the, one of the goals is, is to, to expose manufacturing to our high school students. And that's already happening in Bothell. One is, AGC Biologics has a, is a, they are a contract manufacturer of prescription drugs, and they actually have a intern program for high school students. Also, too, when we do update our IPZ, our Innovation Partnership Zone, it's a biomedical device manufacturing zone, when we update that business plan, we will be incorporating a workforce development component in that. So, the numbers in there are good, and, and, and it's real, and we're working, too, that's one of the areas that we're working on, and so that would be an action item.
I appreciate that, and I, you know, I think that communicating with our school district as well can help us work in partnership with them, so that we actually are, are having our students become the higher, you know, get the higher-wage jobs that are here, so we grow our own. Thank you.
Workforce development training is, is actually really critical, because it's the jobs, the, the retraining that's needed and the, and the uptraining is going to be immense in the next decade.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Orange.
I get to go next. We were wagering who got to go next. It's more of a comment, and I appreciate your comment. You're, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to ask about trade schools, and, and we hear a lot, and we're keenly aware that people who have trade training are, we're in a, in a huge deficit. So you commenting that Bothell's kind of a center point?
Yes.
Is, is a good observation, and, and that, that thought came into my head, too, is how do we foster and encourage that more? The other thing that I'm impressed, that just sticks with me is, Bothell's been a bedroom community, and it looks like we will continue to be a bedroom community, and how do we, how do we, that's not a bad thing, but, you know, how do, how do we? How do we stay economically viable? I don't have an answer for that.
So, when I, I have to tell you a little story. When I first started working here, I was asking a local business, what excites you about Bothell? And he says, it's a small town. And I thought, wait, what? It is, okay, so it's got a small population, but we're a huge, we're the center of a major metropolitan area with a really, really thriving life science sector. So, I don't, I don't, I think the perception that we're, we're just a bedroom community is, from an economic development point of view, we're not. We've got people coming over from all around the region to work in our, in our manufacturing and research and development facilities in, in Canyon Park and in North Creek Park. So what we do is part of what we're doing with the Business Retention and Expansion Program. So we go out and we meet with our companies, we understand what's driving their business, what impacts are we having on them as a city in doing their business, and how can we support them? And just as a reminder, I'll be coming back to council late summer, early fall, with the results of the Business Retention and Expansion Program that I'm running right now, and we'll make some recommendations on programs to help facilitate local business growth and expansion.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you for the presentation. I, too, enjoyed all the data, all the graphs, in, information. I was particularly struck by the cost of living in here. You know, I mean, we, we talk about the cost of living, or the, the housing, especially in Bothell, as, you know, just skyrocketing lately, but looking at this index where we're, you know, basically double of the national average, it looks like, but then, you know, Redmond and Bellevue are another, you know, 100% higher than that in itself. And I, I was like, it's like, I thought it was bad in Bothell, but it's like, thank goodness we're in Bothell at this point. But then over to the leakage, thanks for explaining that a little bit more, because at first, when I just saw the first graph on the page, I was like, leakage, what is that? And then you'd actually explain it, but then when you talked a little bit more about it, it clicked, and, you know, I was just thinking about the vehicle parts, and thinking about the location of all the auto parts stores that we have around us, they're just like clustered all around our borders, but I couldn't really think of one within Bothell. I was like, that's kind of weird, but.
We used it.
Yeah, downtown, downtown, but it's.
I should say, every community has leakage.
Yeah.
Every community has capture. The trick is to knowing what you have, and either deciding, well, that's something we can go and, and we can expand into, or, yeah, that's okay. We can, we can keep going.
And, and kind of like you were mentioning, you were kind of surprised by the food and beverage one. I mean, is, is there something particular about that one?
I would say that a lot of it has to do with Canyon Park, and that's one of the reasons why we're working on the community, community development is working on the sub-area plan out there, is to create more amenities for the workers out there, because we've got 30,000 workers out in Canyon Park. Don't quote me on that. Please, somebody nod. But in any event, and there's, and there's no place for them to go eat or shop, and that is one of the challenges that the employers have out there, and that's one of the reasons for the sub-area plan.
All right. And I, too, will take you up on your offer of going into detail, so careful what you ask for, or what you offer.
You're good, okay. Thank you for your presentation. I think that's really interesting. Have we, we have a brand-new finance director, but I'm just curious, have you been involved with us forecasting in the past? Or is this your first go?
With Bothell, this is our first, first contribution to you.
Okay. And I'm just curious, not to put you on the spot, Director Bothell, do you use this forecasting, these people, or what do you use for forecasting?
Yeah, we get their publication, the Forecaster, and they're just a part of the community that we look out to, to see kind of what's going on in the environment, or the, you know, economic environment in the region. So, yeah, we're aware of them.
Okay. Then, just, just curious.
Yeah.
And do you, do we use other tools, too, or information outside of the Forecaster?
Yeah, we use, King County also publishes a forecast, and so does the City of Seattle. So we look to those economists as well.
Okay. One thing that I was thinking about when I was looking at this, and something that I think other cities our size really benefit from is having a daytime population. So your restaurants actually have two rushes and lunches and dinners, because when I saw that leakage for food, I was like, ah, that, because it's really hard. I mean, we just had another brand-new restaurant close its doors, because they just can't, can't pencil. So, one of the things I think we talked about was the, the vision for the downtown was to try to create more office space and that type of thing. So you look from city to city, is there anything in your perspective that, if you have a city that has more, do you guys look at daytime populations versus not nighttime populations and then for amenity, to be able to support amenities?
We haven't done that kind of, I mean, yes, we could do it. And what you're getting into then is you're trying to figure out your inflow-outflow, home shed versus work shed, and understanding how that works, and that's all data that we have in, in this report, in fact. Typically, for industries, when we, if you were to drill into this, and, and there's, there's more data, we can drill into this, like, we could tell you what kind of restaurants, we could tell you what kind of, you know, how often people go to those kinds of restaurants in this community. That's all there. If anyone's ever done a downtown study, it's that kind of information, right? But we can do that in any kind of geography, so we can look at just Canyon Park, for example, and say, well, this is what's missed, this is what looks like mathematically is missing. And that kind of crosses that border, but really, it's, it's total need, and the challenge with restaurants is they, they have to go in and figure out where the market really is for them. And that, that's hard sometimes, because most restaurant owners, it's an art form. And so they, they bring their product to market and not necessarily look to what the market actually wants.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
So, I have a tendency to believe that it's, it's a bigger, it's something bigger than a daytime population, because I visit with the restaurants on Main Street, and, and some of the other restaurants up in, up on Bothell Way, and they are making money. And I think sometimes restaurants are hard, and, and sometimes it's an issue of education. So I'll be reaching out to some of the restaurants that are closing and trying to understand why they closed.
Because that's our leakage. Yeah, fix the leakage.
You know, I was observing the other day, we've got 300 employees in this building alone, plus we've got, we're surrounded by banks and medical facilities, and when you go to Main Street, the restaurants are always full at lunchtime, and same with some of the restaurants here. And I wish I had answers for you, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, that'd be, I just think it'd be helpful for us making policy decisions, like, we, we looked at the downtown and like, reconfirmed or not what we thought would make sense for the, the vacant lots, and that was one of the things, at least in my mind, that's why I was like, yeah, put more office, office, office in there, to try to boast that up, so that'd be helpful for us to know how helpful that really is in trying to keep the businesses open.
Social media links.
Yeah, there they are, passing them around. You got, ooh, uh-oh, just don't mess with the clerk, man. Only person in the room you don't want to mess with. Okay. Thank you for your presentation, that was awesome. We are on to AB 19-116, Public Safety Levy and Capital Bond Project Plan and First Quarter And we have Carly Jorgur.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Carly Jorgur, and I'm the Public Safety Levy Coordinator. I'm before you tonight to discuss two items of information related to the recently approved Public Safety Levy LIDLIF and the capital bond. These items are, first, the levy implementation project plan, and, second, the first quarter of 2019 progress update. This information may be more familiar to some than others, and particularly for our audience that's listening, I'll just do a refresh of what's in both of these measures and how safe and secure Bothell came to be. The first measure I'll talk about is the capital bond. The capital bond supports the demolition and reconstruction of two aging fire stations, Station 42 in the downtown and Station 45 in Canyon Park. Both of these stations are well over 30 years old and are lived in 24/7, and we're in need of some upgrades. So the new stations are going to feature health and safety upgrades to protect our firefighters, technical modernization, energy efficiency, and more to accommodate our current growth and also prepare for the future. Passage of the capital bond allows the city to issue 20-year bonds worth up to $35.5 million to support both of these projects. When the calculations were first done on this measure, this set the tax rate to 26 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, which, for those with a $500,000 home, is around a $130 per year investment. I have not listed these numbers on the slide because Bothell residents will not actually be taxed for the bond in 2019. This is because the city has not yet issued the first round of bonds. That'll happen later this year, and then Bothell residents will see the, the bond tax show up on their property tax bill in 2020. The second measure is the Public Safety Levy LIDLIF. This levy supports 27 additional staff in the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works and Information Services Department, as well as the municipal court. Some of the new services provided by this levy include full-time emergency medical services at Station 45, an additional patrol shift during peak hours, a new community crime reduction team for proactive policing, an embedded mental health professional, and dedicated staff for traffic enforcement, school safety, crime investigation, community engagement, and I could go on. This levy will generate $4.85 million in this year, which sets the tax rate to 43 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, and for those with a $500,000 home, is around a $220 per year investment. To give you a sense of scale, this levy represents an increase of 15% in police and fire staffing levels, and just under 15% increase in 2019 general fund spending in the police, fire, and municipal court budgets. So what happened that we needed such an increase in public safety services? Over the last two decades, the complexity and quantity of calls for service received by our public safety personnel has increased, and this is due to several factors, a few of which are an increase in, in those experiencing houselessness, mental illness, and substance abuse, as well as an increase in theft, cybercrime, and of course, school safety challenges. As you can see in, in these graphs before you, our staff, our public safety staffing levels have remained relatively flat while both our population has grown, as well as the number of calls for service we've received. For these reasons, in October of 2017, the City Council directed staff to engage the public to determine what level of public safety service would be needed to combat these challenges and how much it was going to cost. Then, just over one year ago, council approved Propositions 1 and 2 for voter consideration in the November 2018 general election. In November, Bothell residents turned out the vote and showed their overwhelming support for both measures. Proposition 1, the levy LIDLIF, passed with just over 60% of the vote, and Proposition 2, with just under 65% of the vote. After these election results were finalized, staff began making plans for implementation. But because of the delayed timing of property tax payments, we needed some funds to kickstart this implementation. On March 5th of this year, City of Council approved $2 million in an inter-fund loan from the Water and Sewer Utilities to start this implementation while we waited for the first property tax payment to come in. And the last time the safe and secure topic was brought before you was on April 2nd, when council approved a purchasing specialist position. This position will support procurement efforts citywide, majority of their workload will be levy-related, so one-third of this position will be funded by the levy. And now our timeline brings us to today, where I get to showcase the really hard work done by staff across seven different departments to create the levy implementation plan. This hiring, or the service delivery timeline before you is the product of our implementation team. It's, our team's comprised of staff from the executive- It's, our team's comprised of staff from the executive, finance, information services, human resources, public works, police, and fire departments. When our team came together, we set three objectives. The first was, we needed to build a plan that could be easily tracked, and needed to be fiscally responsible, and, of course, needed to provide all of the services promised to voters in the levy. After months of analysis and work on this, our team has concluded that all of the services promised by the levy will be provided at full operation by the end of the fourth quarter of 2021. I want to share a bit about how we arrived at this conclusion, and just give an idea why it will truly take three years to implement. Our team followed a project management methodology that's used by our Information Services Department, which focuses on three pillars. The first is defining project scope, the second, the project budget, and last, the timeline in which you can implement. So I'll explain our process using these three pillars, and then we can dive into the first Our first step was to define the project scope, and this was really crucial for our team to ensure clear communication and coordination. Hiring this many staff, purchasing this many vehicles and all associated equipment is a big lift, and we needed to know what was, what it was going to take in order to be successful. We scoped each of the 27 positions as their own individual project deliverable with a series of subtasks. So, for example, to hire and onboard the Police Department's Community Engagement Coordinator, we need to do recruitment, interviews, complete a background check, purchase all the furniture for a workspace, make the hire by technology so they can do their job well, offer training, and then this person's able to begin. And as you can see, for this one new hire, it involves coordination among four different departments. So the same process was replicated for all 27 positions and nine vehicles to get us all on the same page about what it's going to take. Once we understood this, we were able to move into defining our project budget. This graph shows the projected levy ending fund balance for the next 12 years. What this means is it shows the difference between all the levy revenues and all the levy costs at the end of each year. Because of the way levy lid lifts are structured in Washington State, the shape of this graph, where it increases in the first six years and dips back down towards zero in the last six years, is actually quite, quite normal and to be expected. I'll explain a little bit more. In 2001, Washington voters passed tax-limiting legislation, which is I-747, and this law limits cities' abilities to increase the total amount of property tax revenue collected by no more than 1% per year. So that's shown in these green boxes here. It's what cities collect as part of normal course of business. So if a city wants to provide additional services that incur additional costs, they need to seek voter approval. In our case, passage of the levy lid lift raised that levy lid by $4.85 million in this year. The second aspect of this legislation is that for the following five years, the first half of the levy total, the amount of property tax revenue we collect can only increase by a specified limit factor. And when council was deciding on the details of the ballot measure, council chose this limit factor to be the consumer price index for urban wage earners, which is around 2% per year. So we have the initial lift, and then for the following five years, the total amount of revenue collected increases by 2% annually. In the second half of the levy, the amount of revenue collected is still increasing, but it's increasing at a reduced rate. That limit factor drops back down to 1% per year. At the end of the 12 years, the levy lid lift, unless renewed by Bothell voters, will expire. And then the property tax revenue the city collects would revert back to what it would have been without the lift, those green boxes, what's collected as part of normal course So this is a little complex, I know, but there's two implications for us to keep top of mind when we consider this implementation plan. The first is that this is a finite source of funding, and it will expire after 12 years unless renewed by Bothell voters. The second is that the cost of providing services increases at a rate that's far higher than one, than the 1% increase we have in the final six years of the levy. So another way to say this is that our costs will outpace our revenues, which is why we see that curve dip back down towards zero in the latter half of the levy. So you can see why building this shared understanding among our team was really important for us to satisfy one of our objectives, which was to create a fiscally responsible implementation plan. And part of this plan is that staff intends to monitor these fund balances and will plan to bring quarterly updates to both council as well as residents. So our teams defined the project scope, we understand the project budget, the last piece was the timeline. We built off of that scoping step I discussed earlier by adding a duration to each of the Next, we set goals for a target service delivery date. For example, here, the Police Department set a goal that the Community Engagement Coordinator would be working by the end of August. By plugging in the durations and working backwards, we discovered that recruitment needed to begin in early April. The team felt that this was a feasible timeline, so this date stuck and is now what you see in the Service Delivery Timeline Project Plan. However, a few of our more complex project deliverables required some iteration and playing with that target delivery date, extending it out, moving it up, to see what was, what the team felt comfortable with. So this process of doing this timeline was replicated for all of the 27 new positions, as well as the nine vehicles. And the result is the Service Delivery Timeline before you here. In summary, this levy implementation team has been extremely intentional about creating this plan. It was put together with a lot of care and has set us up for a successful implementation over the next three years. So we've got the high-level overview of what the levy implementation will look like. We can celebrate a little incremental progress with our first quarter update. In January of this year, the Fire Department hired six firefighters who then went on to the Fire Academy training. When you receive your quarter two update, you'll see that four of these firefighters graduated. The academy is really grueling, and so we're really proud that the four were able to pass all the tests and make it through. For any of our listeners curious to see these four firefighters, we're actually introduced to City Council on May 21st. The Police Department hired two lateral officers in the first quarter of this year. A lateral officer means that they're transferring over from another jurisdiction. Despite having already been an officer, they're all, the two firefighters will be entering into 16 weeks of field training where they're learning how to do the job in Bothell. These two officers, joined by three more that were hired in quarter two, were presented to City Council on June 4th. You already heard from OAC Services tonight a bit about the bond, but in the first quarter, the Fire and Public Works staff on the bond implementation team reviewed requests for proposals for a construction project manager and entered into negotiations with OAC Services. Also, in the first quarter of this year, staff created a Safe and Secure Communications Plan. The focus of this plan is to tell the story to residents through social media, as well as the website and community engagement opportunities. On the left here, you see a photo of the first Police Department hire, Sukie Carr. You can read about her story on the website. And in the middle is a staff-designed sign that's at both Station 42 and 45, reminding voters that this will become the future site of a new station. And on the right is the also-staff-designed logo that I hope you start to see everywhere. Our first community engagement opportunity will be this Thursday at the Pancake Breakfast. We'll have a table, and a few of the new hires will be with me, so I hope you can all come by and say hello. Also, in your folder, you have a sneak preview of a brochure that we'll be pushing out to the public. I also have it here. Again, this is designed by staff and is hopefully a fun and effective way to communicate the, at least the levy portion of the safe and secure story. All right, so what's next? We've got a lot of heavy lifting already completed by both the levy and bond implementation teams. You can expect to receive quarterly reports, similar to the way you receive reporting on the Safe Streets and Sidewalks levy. The first quarter of 2019 report is in your packet and is already on the website at bothallwall.gov/safethothell. I'm happy to answer any questions, and also, the entire levy implementation team is here as well.
Councilmember Orns.
Quick question. The levy lid lift, I've drawn a blank, expires?
In 12 years.
In 12 years. Okay, so 20, am I doing the math right, about 2030?
About 2032.
2032?
2031, 2019 to 2031.
So at what point, because if, if we don't want to feel a big shock of having to do a staff reduction, about what years the city should we start addressing to the community and letting them know? Because we will have to find a way to fund, fund that. Am I understanding that correctly, to maintain those current levels that we're establishing now? At what point would we let the public know that they need to start thinking about that? Would you suggest?
To maintain the staffing levels after the levy expires?
Right.
I might kick that to you, Finance Director, or Jennifer.
Well, I think you'd need to make a decision whether or not you'd want to put it on the ballot by, like, June, May-June of the year before it expires.
Just the year before?
Yeah, but I'm sure you'd have some campaign that would lead up to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, and I was, I'm really impressed with the work that the team has done. And I just have one question on your scoped positions. So there are 27 positions, and when you did, could you go back to that slide? The triangle.
Do you mean this one?
Yes, that one. So when you did the timeline on that, I was trying to add up really quickly how long it would take, and you had that out as well.
This one?
Yes. So for each of the positions, it takes all of these weeks? I didn't add them up, so I don't know how many it.
Yeah, some, some, that's a great question. Some of these subtasks can happen at the same time.
Okay.
So that's why the, it doesn't add up totally consecutively.
Right, okay.
And these subtasks are, some of them were similar for the 27 positions, and a lot of them looked very different. And this is, I put this one up here as just an example.
And then my second question is, you talked about the police who were hired being lateral officers, and, but they still have to learn how to do it at the Bothell Way. Is that what you said?
For 16 weeks.
16 weeks. That's, that's significant. I guess I'll just chat with our Chief of Police about that one at a later time. But I do want to compliment the implementation team and the work that's been done to bring this report before us, because it's very well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you very much for that report. I think it's very important to have these quarterly updates, just so the council and the public can really see the progress and what, you know, the results of what they voted for, and, you know, once they really start seeing the service increasing and improving and just varying, especially with so much of the police staff increasing, be able to see that service grow in leaps and bounds. So I look forward to future quarterly reports.
Deputy Mayor.
It's very comprehensive, and this is your first time in front of council, so I want to compliment you.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I think I heard one "um," which is way better than I do. I had one question on the timeline and the funding. I heard you say that we wouldn't need to go out for another levy lift till 2031, but when you look at the chart, which is on page 126 of the packet, I'm not sure what page, yes, that one. To me, instinctually, I'm thinking, oh, well, around 2025, we're drawing down. So am I correct or incorrect that at that point, we might have to start drawing down the positions because we won't have enough money to pay for them?
If you want to go for it?
Sure, absolutely. So the idea behind the fund balance is there's some extra monies that will be in the fund balance that we can use. So we really, it's in 2029 that we're spending exactly what we're making. So in 2030, we're dipping about a half million below. So the idea is to prepare for that, and this is part of this communication that we're going to do over the next decade. And so the next generation of leaders in 10 years who are here can then prepare for this, and hopefully, we've done a great job over the last 10 years, sharing with the community why this is so important. But we can't, you could add a new levy if you wanted to do something different. So if you wanted this one to expire, and maybe you wanted to have something more comprehensive, you could certainly put that before the voters earlier, but they would overlap for the voters. So the voters would have what you're paying, what they're paying now for the 12 years, and you would put a levy on top of that. That's certainly a choice that the council could do, but the idea is basically to request, if the council wants to, in 11 or 12 years, request of the voters to extend the existing levy, which is often what happens with EMS levies and the fire levies. That's become more normal course of business, is to just extend it.
But, but am I understanding we're actually sort of banking upfront?
A little bit, yes.
Okay.
Yes. That was part of the timeline, was to be sure that as we spent the funds, because one of the things we said when we, as a team, put this together and we said it to council as we were presenting this, is we hired no additional administrative staff to implement a $4.8 million levy on an annual basis. This was a huge lift internally, and we presented in April that we were using nominal levy funds to help with the implementation for some part-time or limited-term staff. But this is, this is all being done with existing staff, basically. And so that's why we wanted to be sure as we were doing this. That's why you'll see the last individuals are hired in 2021. We didn't want to, one, we physically couldn't hire everyone the first six months, but, two, to be able to spread that out so we could build a bit of a fund balance. This is really thoughtfully done, both from an implementation standpoint, as well as a financial standpoint.
No, I think that's really evident. You're to be congratulated. It's really well done. Great presentation.
Thank you. I'll see you at the Pancake Breakfast. I'll try to come by your booth.
Great.
I'll have two little kids with me.
Perfect.
They're good sometimes. All right, we need to extend the meeting.
I move, we extend the meeting to 9:20. Does that have enough time?
It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McAuliffe, to extend the meeting till 9:20. Any discussion on the motion? See, none, please, your vote. Really got to get rid of this procedure. All right, all who favor, raise your hands, say aye. Okay, pass unanimously, McNeil, absent, excused. AB 19-117, Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy Lid Lift, First Quarter Update, and 2018 Accountability Financial Report. There she is.
Laura's going to pull the.
Laura's going to pull the presentation up for me. She said, she promised.
You're not going to go up to the podium? That's okay, it's good.
That was my goal.
Try something new.
Because how could I follow Carly? She's a tough act to follow. So you may remember that I came to you in April to provide the accountability report for 2018 for the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy. At that point in time, the financial information isn't ready, so came back, come back to now. And in your packet, there was both the financial report for 2018 and the accountability report for 2018. Those both were published in the June edition of The Bridge together, so we'll talk through that. And I also have the 2019 Quarter One update, similar to what Carly delivered. So just as the refresher, the 2016 Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy Lid Lift, about half of it goes towards street operations, and then the other half goes to various capital programs focused on pavement preservation and safe school walk routes. So this is a very complicated graphic, and it sort of speaks to that ending fund balance that we were talking about with the Public Safety Levy, as well as just the different sources of revenue and different programs that are funded by the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy. So on the left-hand side, you see the gray arrows, and those show what the beginning fund balance was at the beginning of 2018 and what the ending fund balance was at the end of the year. You'll see that about $800,000 came out of the fund balance, and that was, you may recall, in the first year, we didn't really have much of a capital program. But you'll see that the pavement preservation program in 2018 was $4.5 million. So we put almost $3 million from the levy into that in 2018 because we didn't have a program in 2017. So the dark green is the levy. The blue balloons are the different areas that are funded with the levy. And you'll see that the lighter green shows the different revenues that go into those various programs. So we have state shared revenues, for example, that go into street operations, and we have grant funds that help support both of our sidewalk and pavement preservation programs. So now into first quarter 2019, picture of the snowplow that you may remember that February was really focused on response and cleanup from the February storms. That actually filtered into second quarter, that cleanup operation. Snow plowing takes a toll on equipment and our roadways, so lots of pothole repairs after that. So you'll see our pothole repair numbers for the first quarter were fairly high. We also, even though we had crummy weather in February, we also had a lot of nice weather in the first quarter, so the crew was able to do a lot of pavement repairs. So that number is roughly half of what we did in the entire year of 2018. We also made progress on design for two pavement preservation projects, and we're really doing a lot of work on the safe school walk route side this first quarter. We brought design of two projects to 90%. We opened bids for the ADA curb ramp project and the 19th Avenue walkway project. Both of those are now currently under construction. I think the ADA curb ramps is almost finished for the 2019. Just a reminder, I presented this in April, but we have this GIS map that we've been working with the IS Department on that shows the current status of Safe Streets and Sidewalks projects, as well as the city's other design and construction projects. And then finally, that's it for me. I will answer any questions you may have. I know it's stunning, after Carly.
Bring Carly back.
I know. I'm going to have to enlist her help to do graphics, at least, my goodness. You know, this is, we're in year three, so it's kind of hopeful that we kind of become boring at this point in time. I mean, we're still delivering on our promises, but it's not nearly as flashy as Public Safety.
And how long is that levy?
This is a nine-year levy.
It's a nine-year, and then the Public Safety one was 12, so, right, okay.
Right, and this one was, we didn't do the increased increments in the early year, so this is just 1% per year for the full nine years is what it can increase. So you'll see some changes probably in the distribution between operations and the capital programs in those out years. So that's where we're providing our buffer.
And just real quick, one other question. You mentioned that the first year of the levy, we didn't have a lot of capital. Could you explain to the listening, why?
Sure. So we didn't, we couldn't anticipate that the levy would be approved by the voters. So we didn't have a bunch of projects that were already designed and ready to go to construction right away in 2017, but we did start right away on designing those pavement preservation projects, as well as the safe school walk routes projects. So that's what you'll see here in 2018 and 2019. So in 2018, we did essentially double the pavement preservation projects that we would typically do in a year. So we catch up, and right now, we have three major sidewalk projects, at least in design phase, and hoping to go to construction on all three of those by the end of this year. So that's a lot. So essentially, we build up the money, and then sometimes we'll go out for two years. And as you'll recall, we didn't get a crack seal contract in place until tonight, so we have to put off our slurry seal project that would originally happen in 2019 to 2020. So we'll do double the slurry seal next year. This is kind of how the projects work.
Yeah, I've received that feedback a few times, too, where they're like, why didn't you do anything? It's like, you have to design it first, but it's simple steps. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, and you aren't as excited as the other report, but that's okay. That wasn't expected. What I am going to ask, though, is kind of that same question. As we reach the end of this nine-year period, are we going to probably have to go out to the voters again?
In order to continue this level of programs, both on our operating side as well as the capital side, yes, we'd probably have to do that.
And I think it will be important to know exactly, kind of, as you deliver your reports, you know, we have certainly great needs for safe schools and sidewalks, and a lot of repair, and making sure that we do that, I forget what you call them, the ramps, ramps as well? So identifying, you know, as we get closer to that end, what we still have left to do is probably important.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's an excellent point. And one of the portions of the resolution that council adopted was to guarantee that every year, at a minimum, we would come back with that accountability report to talk about what it is we've done in that year and what we're projected to do in the following year. And to your point, Councilmember, as those years go on, we would definitely need to start speaking about what's still left to do, because there's a lot.
Oh, yes.
$100 million of sidewalk segments that are missing, so, yeah, our work is never done.
And that's something that on a continuous basis, we need to hear, is that, you know, we still have other great needs.
Yes.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
I should talk to you some more when I had my turn. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on, almost done. Oh, yes, the favorite. I believe Councilmember McAuliffe, did you want to kick off the council conversation? Maybe I should do my thing first, real quick. So Snohomish County, Dave Summers is spearheading a Housing Affordability Regional Task Force, and I kind of dropped the ball, to be honest with you. He's been sending them only to me, and I can't go to them because they're during the day. But we could send somebody in my place. If, Councilmember, I think they do want it, limited to elected officials being on this thing. So I can give, I brought it up on my, if you're curious about like kind of what time, they're always in the City of Everett. Looks like they're, well, they're from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., so if that's doable for anybody, please speak now, so we can assign somebody. There, it looks like they've got, one, two, three, four, five meetings scheduled. Looks like they're going to be, October 4 to 6 p.m. each time. City of Everett Training, that's City of Everett Training Room, it says.
Is there a day, a certain day they're doing it?
Yeah, I've got those, and so they're, let's see. Oop, we missed that one, June 6, that's when they probably started calling. Oh, we missed that one, too, good. This is getting easier by the moment. Let's see, oh, here we go, July 18. Ooh, they moved it from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And it's, yeah, City of Everett Training Room, it's in Everett. And then the next date is September 12, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., same City of Everett Training, and then the last one is October 3, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. I don't know if they're going to have any more after that, I imagine not.
If I may, Mayor, I believe they're scheduled through December.
Oh, they just stopped sending them to me at that point? Okay, I don't blame them. Did they send the invites? Do you have all the dates?
I do, yes. It's the first Thursday of the month, starting in October. That's when they switched to a more regular schedule. So it's the first Thursday of the month, October, November, December, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Oh, so that's a bigger commitment, okay. Well, there's no way I can do it, so this.
Maybe if you send us the list, some of us can just choose, right? What we might be available for? I'd like to.
I'd like to go to some, but I really wouldn't want to commit for every one of them.
Okay, I don't know, I think they were kind of looking for like a, yeah, somebody that's, because it's like it builds on itself kind of thing. Yeah. Tom? No? Our dedicated Snohomish County Councilmember, are you interested?
I am interested. I am interested, but let me take a look at those dates again, because just on the 18th, I think that conflicts with the Association of Snohomish County Cities event or meeting that night as well. But let me take a look at that.
I'd be interested.
You want to do it? You want him to do it? Okay, there we go. So will you follow up with them? You're in contact with them, because I'm a horrible mayor at this point in their eyes.
I would be happy to follow up with Snohomish County staff on that. They also are looking for an alternate, and that doesn't have to be an elected official, so I'm happy to serve as alternate to that and work with Councilmember Agnew on materials and preparation for meetings and those sorts of things.
Sold. Sounds good, I think. All right, unless you want to do, you want to go through the materials? Well, you'd be doing that anyways, wouldn't you, if we hadn't him as alternate?
I'd be tracking it, at least, yes.
Yeah.
I can be the alternate.
Okay.
In between.
Or do you want to deflect it to the director? He's pretty good.
He is really, he is really good.
I have full faith in him.
I'd be happy to work with both councilmembers and keep you up to date on what's happening at the task force and the materials for that.
Now we got trifecta. All right, there we go. So you'll be the primary and you'll be the alternate?
Yep.
To the Snohomish County Regional Housing Task.
We'll have the real brain behind this.
And that's important. Okay, that was a mic committee report. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So just to be brief, first of all, I think I can do this. I'd like to congratulate Davina Dur as Representative Durnow, and I did listen to your presentation and the responses to the questions by King County Council, and I just want you to know, I was very impressed with your goals, your accomplishments, and I know that you'll be a great team with Representative Derek Stanford and Representative Sharon, I'm sorry, Senator Derek Stanford and Representative Shelley Koa. And I know you represent the people of the First Legislative District well, and always have Bothell first and foremost in your mind. So I want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much. It's a real honor. I put on, I think I put out on Facebook, there are days in your life where you go beyond where you ever thought you'd be, and that was one of those days yesterday. So I'm very humbled and very excited, and I have no idea what I got myself into.
Well, as I said, welcome to the zoo.
Thanks so much.
Yes, and then I want to, I'm very excited to tell you that on July 5, we'll open our first Bothell Friday Market, and I want to thank, and we'll have the ribbon cutting on July 12 at 4:00 p.m. So you're all, many of you have been invited, but everybody's invited. I want to thank John Howey, Chef John Howey, for hosting us at Beardsley, at the Villas at Beardsley. They've been very welcoming and very helpful. I also want to call out to the North Shore Rotary, who is our sponsors as well. And I think what I really would like to also recognize is that Lieutenant Todd Bailey came out today and did a pre-inspection for us, and he was so supportive and, you know, helped us identify the safety needs that we needed to consider on the site, so that when people were exiting, if there was a necessary emergency exit, everything would be clear for them, for the restaurants, the businesses, and for the people that are attending. So he did an outstanding job for us. That was really appreciated. We will have farmers, berry growers, flowers, City of Bothell Parksman Rick is going to join us on ribbon cutting day, July 12, and to promote the Prose Plan of Artists and Crafters. And I just want to compliment everybody who has helped us get to this point. It has not been easy, but we're there, and I'm so excited, and I want you all to come.
Congratulations. That was a lot of work on your part. You should be really proud. Yeah, it's fantastic, yeah.
Converse, there you go.
Well, the Fourth of July is coming up. I think we have a little shindig here in the city, don't we? Okay. But right after the Fourth of July parade, I think North Shore Senior Center is putting on a little shindig of their own, where they're going to have food trucks and bands and bouncy houses. And I was telling somebody about that one time, and they said, no, senior center's having bouncy houses. I said, well, I don't think it's necessarily just for the seniors, but come on out and join them. It's a good cause.
Pie eating, you forgot pie eating.
Pie eating contest at 2, you're going down. You're going down.
It's on.
Yep.
Anything else? Jeanurey's good for something. There we go, Councilmember.
I'm sorry. I did, I went to AWC last week, which y'all should do sometime. And there's just so many classes, and you can't take them all, and I tried to take it every time something was offered I was there. I sat in on a GIS class, and it was fascinating to see all the applications for how you integrate data and tie it to geographical spots, everywhere from tracking permits and seeing what permits are in process, to being able to identify cemetery plots for people who come to town and want to know where, you know, Beardsley's buried, and you can go toddle them off. It's a great resource. Also went to a workshop on homelessness, and Kennewick, who has had a major revitalization, and they're hosting AWC next week, so, or next year, so I'm hoping to go see the magic that they've done there. But what I thought was interesting was, I also sat in on a census workshop, and I'm just going to read my notes to you. The state authorized $15 million for us to get the word out, because a lot of grants are tied to the census, and there's hurdles with it. Things that make it hard to count, people, is language barriers, distress, distressed mobility, people who are either homeless, or they're sofa surfing, or they're, for whatever reason. Here's, and here's the one hurdle that they're anticipating, is that with the low, record-low unemployment that we've got going on right now, that they're going to have a hard time finding people to hire as census takers. So I don't know if the city wants to be, has a place to be a part of promoting census takers, but they're anticipating that's going to be very difficult. They're hoping to get extra participation from schools and libraries, et cetera, to get the word out to be counted. And then the other fascinating thing was, I went on three tours of watching how they put infrastructure and parks together. Spokane has stormwater like we don't have, and I don't know if you want the aside, but only 40% of their stormwater is separated.
And I don't know if you want the aside, but only 40% of their stormwater is separated from their sewer, which means when there's a, and you probably know this, Mayor, when there's a big storm, all that water and sewage go together, and if their sewage treatment plan can't handle it, it goes right into the river. So they've built huge, huge vaults, and it was interesting to see how they have very successfully come up with a solution for that. And then how to preserve legacy landscape, and how they go about deciding to preserve trees. I think this is an old piece of the waterfront park, but I thought, oh, man, this would be cool for Bothell to have. They have a trash-eating goat that's a statue, so it functions as art. Have you guys seen this? It functions as art. It's a little time button that you push, and a little vacuum starts, and you can just pop your garbage into it, and this little metal goat sucks in the garbage. That's great. I thought, we need one of those. Anyway, but some of the classes I missed, and it was sad to miss, was behavioral health in rural and urban communities, how communities can build wealth building, how you set rating, set rates, and running effective public comment. So I was sad to miss some of those workshops, but maybe next time. Anyway, that's my report on that.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, instead of a goat, we should have a crow.
Are we done conversing?
Yep.
All right. Is there a motion adjourned? Have fun on your trip.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McAuliffe. Any discussion? Seeing none? You ready? Say quick, place your vote. Or adjourned?